Good evening. This is a regular meeting. Is this on?
Yeah.
Good evening. Welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. It's Wednesday, October 18th, 2023. It's 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order and note that all of council is present and. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance, Councilmember McDonald.
Yeah, Justice Paul.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
And. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is council and staff announcements, Mr. Pyric.
Yes, we had two closed sessions earlier this evening and there is no reportable action.
And Ms. Hannah.
Good evening, Mayor. Staff has no announcements this evening.
And council announcements. Councilmember Muleo.
Thank you. At the Lighthouse on November 11th is Veterans Day Celebration starts at 11 o'clock. And it's 11 o'clock on Saturday, Veterans Day, November 11th. So well, you're all welcome to attend.
All right, we're now on to general public comment. Anyone wishing to make a general public comment? Would you please come forward? There are seats, empty seats. Is there anyone else besides Mr. Miller that has general public comment? Would you please come forward? Welcome.
And public comment and wasn't allowed in. And I was in there before 6 o'clock, I mean before 5 o'clock. And they said the moderator was informed of my presence and then was. So I don't know what that's about, but get a concept here. Legal meeting means public comment is allowed. And if we're going to keep zooming, then you better make sure that doesn't. Been pushed out of a meeting.
So my recommendation, Mayor, is that the speaker be allowed three minutes to speak on the closed session items and an additional.
Yeah, please, please. In fact, we noticed it. I noticed it when we went upstairs, but not before. So it was absolutely was inadvertent. So my apologies. So please.
And I would also add that if there's anyone else either on Zoom or in the audience that wanted to make a comment on the closed session item, that they be given that opportunity.
Oh.
So on the closed session item, for those that don't know, one of them was about raises. Two of the people on the city's negotiating team are two people that benefit by the raises. So I'm not sure exactly if that's really too kosher that you have that. So at some point in time, this council has to realize these raises cannot continue at the breakneck peak they're going. We have, and not to single her out, though I'm going to, but adore her. She's wonderful. The city clerk, who isn't working with us right now, but the city clerk now has an assistant city clerk. And there's a posting on the city's website for a full-time person to deal with the cemetery. For decades, the city clerk took care of the cemetery. Then there was a part-time cemetery person, and there was never an assistant city clerk until a few years ago. So now we have a city clerk making 30 to 40%. And there's other positions that are like this in the city. 30 to 40% more than in Seaside or Carmel for the same job. But they don't have an assistant city clerk. So how we went from a position to three full-time positions, basically doing the same job, when in Seaside, they got a cemetery over there too. You know, I I'm not understanding this concept that we just keep rolling in. So those of us in the general public, for instance, me, who's, you know, have private business and stuff, we have to pay 15% social security. And we don't have this guaranteed income outside of social security that the employees do for the rest of their life. So when you're giving all these raises, you're also raising what they're going to get for the rest of their lives. That's how we're $55 million in debt. So every time somebody says, oh, the city's got money, the city's got money coming in from hotels that are going to be built. You know, everything's wonderful and everything's great. If you take every dollar that comes in and tax for those hotels for the next 30 years, you're going to just about be paying off our debt to CalPERS. But meanwhile, creating positions and keep moving these these people up, step raises, 3% a year, more money for medical. And also seeing out there, and now if we'll just run into the next three minutes and just blend this all in together, is we were told, and you were on the city council at the same time I was, Mayor Peak, we were told that police, if we gave them medical, we would never ever have to worry again about being fully staffed. Remember that? They said that's the only thing keeping us from staying up with everybody else is that we don't give medical, even though we gave them $750 a month from the Fergo Medical. So we didn't claw back to 750 and we gave them full medical. Now there's an ad out there for lateral entries for the police department and also for us to put people through the police academy for the police department. So we obviously don't have full staffing. So so much for that. So this whole concept that if we just pay more and more and more, nobody's going to go anywhere else, doesn't happen, does not happen. So at some point in time, it used to be we were given 90% of a median of places that don't even have much to do with Pacific Grove. Now it's, we're just giving away people that just came to work at at the recreation department, just got 9% raises. They just came to work. They came to work knowing what they were going to get paid, but let's give them 9% more and $100 more a month for medical. On top of the 1750 we're already giving up. It's really getting absurd. The other absurd thing is, we just had, we're in the middle of fall break for school. And once again, the city has closed the youth center outside of the 30 kids that are 12 and under. So it just rolls into another month of kids over the age of 12 not being able to use the youth center. I don't understand the concept. You also need to look at what the the recreation department currently has on their website. When you see, here's, here's our catalog. Go look at the catalog. They have stuff that ended back May in the catalog. They have almost nothing now unless everybody, I think there's still room in yoga for moms and tots, so which serves this community greatly. So at some point in time, for all the new people that have been been hired in the recreation department, I don't think the the rec board is watching over them close enough. And the council sure as heck isn't because you guys agreed to those positions. And I want to see the rec department head to come here and tell you about all the new programs that are coming up, not what she did in the summer, not what was done before, but with all these new employees, what we're getting out of the literally hundreds of thousands of dollars and obligations for decades to come that we're giving to the recreation department. I live across from their office and I guarantee you I see very little movement over there. The door's not open, got to make an appointment to go in and talk to them. You know, I've gone over there and said, there's people playing pickleball on the third court that they're not supposed to be playing on. And they said, oh, we didn't know that. I said, well, look out the window and you literally could see it out the window. Thank you very much for the extra time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome. Mayor, City Council, my name is Mike Gibbs. I'm a citizen of Pacific Grove, member of the Economic Development Council. I'm here on my own behalf. And I want to refer to the larger housing issues in Sacramento. SB, that Senate Bill 423 expands Senate Bill 35 and basically makes it nearly impossible for any city to make its own decisions. Pacific Grove is a charter city and we have a little bit more leeway doing that. There's a lawsuit that about 200 cities to take that to task. But the thing is, is that we won't have control over the coastal properties. We won't have control over environmental aspects of things. And the Noah Building, I know some people are interested in that. That's back on the table under Senate Bill 423, in my opinion. I'm not a lawyer. I think it's frustrating for some developers to address some of the concerns about traffic and parking, but the fact of the matter is, under this bill, Senate Bill 423, Pacific Grove, which will be affected by these projects, will have basically no right to a hearing if something starts to get billed. Public engagement often leads to better projects. Removing public input from this process only increases distrust and slows construction in the end because you got people demonstrating. Nobody really wants that. In Palo Alto, they've been pretty active in this. Mayor Lydia Cowell said in her State of the Union address this year that 423, SB 423 is an example of Sacramento basically out of control. And she said, what they have done under 423 is goes against the whole meaning of democracy in the United States. It's going to, in my opinion, and lots of people agree with this, it's going to raise land and home values, making it harder for first-time homeowners. Whether you're at a low income or any other affordable housing in California is around $750,000. We got to build 1,125 units. I don't know. My second grade math teacher would say, hey, Mr. Councilman Paduri knows this. That's a billion bucks. Where's the billion dollars going to come from? Don't know. Okay. So even in in San Fernando Valley, Chair Luz Rivas, who is the chairman of the Natural Resources Committee, said, my, and she's a Democrat, she's a liberal progressive, said, my constituents can't afford to buy a house under 423. It's going to be impossible. So all I have to say is that if you believe that Mr. Newsom and wealthy politicians who live in gated communities have our interests, our best interest at heart here in Pacific Grove, you're sadly mistaken. They do not. And if you believe that wealthy developers getting involved are going to result in more affordable, affordable housing, not going to happen. And some of that is on us. We don't really have an opposition party in the state of California. We've got Democrats, God bless them, running things up in the state, and there is no opposition. And that's on us by not, you know, electing more people. October 23rd, 7:00 PM, October 23rd, 7:00 PM at the Carmel High School, Donna Addis and John Laird will be appearing in a public hearing. Show up to talk about SB 423 and SB 35 and eight, nine and 10. If you don't, if you don't, I like the way things are going. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Well, those are two great speakers to follow up on. First of all, I want to start off and say I support everything Dan Miller said and everything that was said by the following speaker, Mr. Gibbs. Now, for those of you who don't know, Mr. Miller, he was not only a planning commissioner, an outstanding one for many years, but he was also elected to city council. Some of you served with him. If you've been here long enough to know that. So he really does his homework. He really knows what's going on. And I think he misses being on the city council because he's so knowledgeable and comes and makes such great speeches and oral communications. Now, I want to say for myself, I would like the city, see the city run like a business. When I was younger, I worked for a school district and I know how they operated. And you know what was interesting? Each school district in the same area had different starting salaries. They never once said, we all have to compete to be the biggest salary payer. Some had more, some paid less, and and the steps all the way up always changed. So anyway, that's something to think about. Please run the city like a business. You're supposed to represent the welfare of the taxpayers. Now that's sort of a follow-up to what Mr. Miller said. Now, as far as what Mr. Gibbs said, you know, we're stuck with this SB 423 and this SB 9. And where did they come from? Well, people say, oh, they're state mandates. Well, that's kind of a soft sell. What do you mean by their state mandates? Well, they're mandated by the party in control of the state. It's not a entity, an invisible magical entity called the state. It's the people in Sacramento. And how did they get there? They got elected. And who did they get elected by? The people of California. So in Sacramento, we have a majority, a Democrat-controlled government in Sacramento, and they're the ones who push down all of their mandates and all of their SBs and other bills on us. And then a Democrat governor signs that. So people say, oh gee, what are we going to do? What can we do? Well, you can start by dis-electing, by removing these people from office. Next time they run, think about what you're getting here. You're not just getting the illusion of women's rights and some other minor things, maybe more important. Some people are one-trick ponies and vote based on one issue. But overall, I find a lot of disquietude with the Democrat Party. So I want to encourage people to look for a change and seriously consider voting for, regardless of what the New York Times and ABC and PBS and NPR say, I want you to consider voting for Republican candidates. It's going to be the only way we're going to save the state financially and preserve the values and quality of life in the community. So thank you very much for letting me share that with you. Thank you. Anyone else have a public comment? How about on Zoom? Can we see how many people wish to speak?
There's two speakers, Mayor Peak. It's just the timer was blocking it.
Oh, okay. Ms. Wilson, welcome. Janet Wilson. Is Janet Wilson unmuted?
Hi, sorry, I had to find the unmute button. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm here to speak again about the transportation issues in our lovely city of Pacific Grove. Last December 7th, the routes changed, cutting service tremendously, including to my whole entire neighborhood. I'm sure you remember me and my complaints before, but I'm back to tell you how it's devastating my life. I used to get out on a regular basis for the moment. Now I'm not able to walk as the half mile to the bus stop. I'm sorry, it's four tenths of a mile to the bus stop. And so I've been using rides. The other day I went to the wonderful, wonderful poetry consortium reading at our lovely Pacific Grove Library, which is from 5:30 to 6:30 at night. And I scheduled rides. The rides were supposed to pick me up at 7 o'clock. And about five minutes to seven, I got a call from the dispatcher that says the van driver just called. He's just emptied in Greenfield. That's an hour away. They expected me to wait. That's the kind of service I get on rides. Luckily, there were three neighbors there and they gave me a ride home. This happens all the time. Rides forgets me, they're late, whatever. I want to be able to access my public bus by walking to the corner, just like anybody else. Has anybody on the city council, since the last time I spoke, which was several months ago, have any of you yet ridden the bus? I doubt it. The other thing I want to say is that when the time rolls around and they're starting to count the number of riders on the bus and you see that the ridership has diminished and so that you decide to cut the bus line yet again, realize the reason people aren't riding the bus is how inconvenient it is, the lack of hours. I mean, nobody can get home in the evening, so there's nobody riding the bus. Something has to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dahmer, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. What heartfelt sentiments that poor woman is trying to convey to you. Something needs to be done. I'm going to ask another question of what is happening with our CSOs and parking enforcement and with the ones that were supposed to be wildlife enforcement? What is happening with cross-training? What is happening with our What is happening with cross-training? What is happening with our police department? We've certainly given them enough raises. I will agree with Dan Miller on all of his comments on that. Absolutely. We are, we are fast approaching unsustainable in any way, shape, make or form. And I wish you would understand that and curb these outrageous salaries. But I really would like to know, what in the world? I thought it went through council. We were gonna have halftime CSOs for wildlife training too, enforcement? We don't even know where to report wildlife enforcement or how it's recorded or documented. This is truly a big issue that was supposedly handled quite a while ago, only I couldn't even get, I was told that there's only one parking and a CSO and she was busy doing all kinds of other things. I mean, I don't, I don't understand what's happening because the money has certainly been expended. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that closed public comment?
One more speaker, sir.
Which is?
Nancy Parsons.
Welcome, Ms. Parsons.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for taking my call. This is regarding the housing mandate. This is a statement and a question that I have for the City Council and the Mayor.
Did you hold your comments till we get to that on our agenda?
Oh, absolutely.
That'll be coming up. And I, I want to see if we can answer a question about how to report wildlife infractions. Ms. Hannah, I see Commander Anderson there in the back. Where, where would someone or how would someone report wildlife infractions?
Up, I'll defer to the commander.
Yeah. Sure. Good to see you.
Obviously, I'm Commander Anderson, for those that don't know me. So wildlife right now would be, for enforcement, would be the day morden through the state. Obviously, you can call the police department and we have somebody available. We can do education out in the field in regards to any type of wildlife violations. Other than that, to answer the other questions, we have CSOs in the backgrounds process right now. So they hopefully will be out working soon enough. I don't know if that answers your questions.
And I suppose there's obviously the phone number for, for the police department?
Yes, you can call the front desk non-emergency line for any type of wildlife concerns. And we'll direct you in the right area if we have people available to go out and take a look. We'll be more than happy to go out there.
Thank you very much. All right, we're now on to the consent agenda. Anyone on council wishing to pull a consent agenda item? Councilmember Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to pull my item eight G and bring it to the November first on the regular agenda.
Eight G, Water Conservation Ad Hoc Subcommittee Report?
Correct. I would like that on the regular agenda for November first, and I'll resubmit. Thank you.
Oh. Okay, you're, you want to continue. We did approve.
Right.
Okay, we did approve the agenda. Okay. Any other council member? No. All right, members of public wishing to pull a consent agenda item. And nine B, and who sent? Sir, could you, Mr. Miller? Anyone else? Mister. Mister. And I see a hand up, Ms. Dahmer.
Thank you. I'd like to pull eight B. As in boy.
Okay. Let's approve the amended consent agenda. For starters.
Okay, I'll do, I'll make that motion, I guess.
Second.
Favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so we're going to continue items eight G to a future date. All right, let's, let's hear the consent agenda items right away. I'd like to try a little different process. I'm gonna read off the, the item that's been pulled and recognize the person that pulled it so they can make some comments and then we'll vote. We'll have council discussion and vote, okay? Clear on that? All right, so we'll start off with eight B, fourth quarter fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three purchase order report. Ms. Dahmer.
Thank you. I was noticing in looking at this, on the purchase orders, that some of them go way back and are still open, such as Trapepi. We haven't used them. It was opened by, I imagine, the city manager and the item of renewing any contract with ZIM was tabled. Why in the world is it still open and on the books? Whatever happened with the professional golf course study that is still open? No expenditures, and that was from April? Wondering about that. I didn't go through absolutely all of them, but I'm wondering about old contracts that are open that are with people that we aren't using anymore. So just, that was my question.
Thank you. Any other comment on this item? Seeing none, council discussion on this item or a motion?
I don't know if it's moving to receive report, but I'll move, I'll move approval or whatever the recommended action is.
I'll second it.
It's received the report, so, right. All right, moving on to the next item, it's eight E, League of California Cities Travel Report. That's my travel report, Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you, Mayor Mike Gibbs, member of the EDC. I'm, I just, you know, you all went to the League of California Cities, and I think that's what two of these reports are about. And, you know, thank you for going. Thank you for spending your time. Sounds like you learned a lot of stuff. And Mayor, I, you know, your comment in this report, it was probably just a quote from, from one of the conferences that you attended, I'm guessing, but if I get this right, you said in your report that citizens may blame local elected officials, I presume that's you all, for implementing housing regulations that are required by the state. Put you in a tough position. You've heard Mr. Tumanello, me and other people talk about this. And then you finish in quotes, this is a no-win situation. I can't argue with that. I would say, however, and my only comment is that about half of the cities in the league actually signed a petition against SB nine. And I didn't see the city Pacific Grove. I could be wrong. I don't know if you signed a petition and I didn't see it. And, and the other thing is that the mayor of Palo Alto and others have protested in public about some of these mandates. I agree, you know, we're kind of getting run over. Not much you can do about that. But I, you know, I think you could say, you know, we don't appreciate it. We're standing up for the citizens of Pacific Grove. And a lot of these things basically are mandates, which if we had to do it, we wouldn't do it this way. I don't know what the statement is. So I just wanted to make that observation. Thank you for going and bringing that back, but it is a no-win situation. I think a little bit more discussion or not protest, but saying that's not how we would do it here in PG is, it might be appropriate thing to say. Thank you.
And does that cover your comments for the next item as well? All right, eight F, twenty-two, twenty-three, League of California Cities Annual Conference attendance.
I think this is Councilmember Beck.
That's your report.
It's, okay, well, I was commenting on the one that was legalization of marijuana and cannabis. Is that this one? Okay, good. So, and I, the only thing, and I heard this before in the report, but I believe that the report says since legalization, there has been a drop in consumption by young people due to education. That is the overall consumption of marijuana in any form was dropped. Now, I realize that the conference that you went to was held, if I, if I see this right, by a pro advocate cannabis group. So obviously, they, you know, they had a benefit, they benefit by more consumption. And at the same time, saying there's less consumption because people are upset about young people losing it, using it. And I would only say that in the state of California, that is absolutely totally not true. Maybe they're talking about Nevada or Montana. I don't know what they're talking about. But in the state of California, Colorado, which, which legalized first basically for recreational use, and California doesn't fall too far behind that for the age group, since legalization of twelve to seventeen use, and that age group is up forty-three percent utilization in the age twelve to seventeen, and this is in a Hudson, Hudson Institute report. I'd be glad to send it to you all. And in the age group next up from that, eighteen to twenty-five uses up fifty percent since legalization. So that's vaping, that's smoking, that's doping, that's dropping, that's chewing, it's drinking, you know? There are so many more opportunities and often people will say, well, yeah, but everybody drinks, you know, everybody drinks alcohol. Well, it's kind of a different thing because it has this, has a psychotropic effect, as you may have heard me say before, my psychologist. And forty years ago, I treated veterans coming back from Vietnam, and it was one-tenth, one-tenth the dose levels as, as compared to today, so they're a lot higher. So it's a little hard to separate all that out, but I just wanted to get up to say, and is that young people in all age groups are using it at significantly higher rates, whether you educate them or not. And I, I talked to Ralph Porras, the former superintendent. He asked me to come over to his office right before he left. And he said, Mike, you know, the use in the PG school system, particularly in the middle school, Principal Roach can confirm this. Principal Roach, that the use among young people, particularly of vapes, is up significantly in Pacific Grove over the last three to four years. So I just wanted to hit that point, and I appreciate y'all going and providing that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Onto item nine B, amending an agreement with Alvarez Technology Group for Information Technology Services. Mr. Miller, welcome.
Thank you. This is another one of those things that amazes me. I went out and looked a while back at what people were being paid. And our IT person was right in line with IT people in neighboring cities. Except the neighboring cities don't have almost a hundred thousand dollars they're paying to help out the IT guy. Not too many years ago, we contracted with one of the local computer people to do all our IT stuff. And it was, was not that great because it was on an hourly basis as needed. Now we have a full-time person, and if you look at our website, and I believe they have some input to the website, all those things from back in March and last year and stuff that are still on there. One of the most unnavigable websites I've seen in my life. I go on there knowing something about this city, how it's constructed and stuff. And I'll tell you, sometimes it's like an Easter egg hunt in some forest and some far off land. You cannot find what you're trying to find on there. And the cloggingness of stuff that's on there that doesn't need to be on there because it's expired, classes that are over and done with, you know, meetings that, that happened six months, eight months ago. It's all on there. And now, maybe this is why we need to spend sixty thousand dollars more is because our IT guy isn't doing a good job on the website, so now we gotta pay somebody else to do it. So I'm not understanding again why we're paying somebody the big bucks, just like Carmel and Seaside and everybody else is paying. But for some reason now, we basically gotta have him have an assistant. So either we're not hiring the right people to begin with or there is something going on in this city because we only have certain, you know, a finite number of computers in this city. We have, we have a lot of employees that don't have computers. This is like, look at our, you know, phone systems sometimes, where for goodness sake, give every employee their own cell phone. It'd be cheaper than what we're paying for phone service for the city. So at some point in time, again, you can't just say, okay, well, it's just another sixty grand. It's a hundred grand total. It's sixty, sixty grand now, and next year it's gonna be a hundred grand. You know, so, and then it's gonna be benefits, and then it's gonna be a full-time job. And really, this has to stop somewhere. We had a city manager a few years ago, Jim Colangelo, that cut back all this stuff. And now it's all come back in spades, and it's not a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Well, some of you have worked in the private sectors and others of you may not have. And some of you have had your own businesses and some of you may not have. But I just want to entreat you to follow and pay attention to what Mr. Miller's pointing out. As I said earlier, the city needs to be run like a business. And the money that you spend, you should think of as your money, not the city's money. So who's the city? The city, I guess we could consider to be all the taxpayers who are funding all this oftentimes largess. What he pointed out about the IT department is extremely important. That's just one small example of what I would call not prudent management. Okay, you people are overseeing our welfare, our financial welfare, our spending, our taxation now and in the future. You know, as this unfunded pension liability keeps growing year after year, decade after decade, salary after salary, at some point, the tree's gonna break. Okay, we have to look ahead. If you were running a business, if you were board of directors for a corporation, you'd be under a lot more fire than you are. Who comes and criticizes you? Well, I'm one of the people who's gonna come and criticize you. So is Mr. Miller. So I want to thank you and just point that out, and I appreciate the time you spend. Let's be a little more expeditious and be concerned about the value that the city is receiving and how much and what type of ways you're spending our taxpayers' resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, council discussion on this item, nine B? Or a motion?
Same here. Second.
All right. May we have a vote, please, Ms. Goff?
Councilmember Emilio.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti. Councilmember Donald.
Aye.
Councilmember Pedury.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
And Mayor Peak.
Aye. Looks like it's unanimous. Motion carried. Right, we're now on to item eleven A, sixth cycle draft housing element. Mr. Sador, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Peak, and good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Joseph Sador with CDD. And I'll keep my comments, opening comments briefed this evening so that we can get right into the formal presentation and public comment and questions. Just briefly, the draft housing element was distributed for public review back in September. And that began on September eighteenth and ended on, yesterday on the October seventeenth. And the city received a large number of public comments, many of which were raised issue with the site forty-nine on the sites inventory, the Noah Building site. Uh, raised issue with the site forty-nine on the sites inventory, the Noah building site. And the planning commission during this public review period. Met on October fifth and October twelfth to consider the um. Uh, draft housing element and provide comments and recommendations to the city council. And last week on the twelfth of October, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward. Uh, the recommendations on the draft housing element to the city council. With recommendation to the council to accept their recommendations and direct staff to transmit the draft housing element to the state. And the planning commission made some other recommendations as well, which Mr. Russell will go into in more detail. Uh, during the formal presentation. And this evening, uh, uh. If the city council directs, uh, staff will transmit um, the draft housing element. Uh, with corrections and directions or changes per your direction to HCD on November first. And this concludes my comments and I'll hand the uh. Um, microphone now over to Mr. Russell from Rincon. So that he can give the formal presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Peak and council members. Can you hear me okay?
Good evening.
All right, let me share my screen. Can you see it okay? Are you able to um, see my my presentation? Yes. Okay, perfect. Well, good evening. Happy to to be with you virtually. My name is Ryan. I'm with Rincon Consultants. We also have Veronica Tam. With Veronica Tam and Associates here um, at the meeting as well to answer any questions or comments that come up at the end. Um, so I will be giving a brief presentation this evening and so it'll go over briefly what the housing element is. Um, talk about the site inventory, which is an important piece of the housing element as well as as well as the affirmatively furthering fair housing piece. Then I'll talk about chapter three, the policy document. Go over summarize the planning commission's recommendations and go over next steps. So what is a housing element as um, as I'm sure you are aware, it's one of the required. Elements of the city's general plan, but unlike other elements which typically have a twenty or thirty year um, range, the housing element is required. By state law to be updated every eight years in cycles. So we're currently planning for the sixth cycle with this housing element, which will run to twenty thirty-one. And just some things to note, if if you don't have a a compliant housing element, it brings some risk to the city. Since it is part of the city's general plan, um, it could create some risks on how a city makes its land use decisions. Also, there's a variety of state funding eligibility that the city would lose out to if um, it doesn't have a a compliant housing element as well. So within the housing element, it looks at current and future housing needs in the city, so demographic information as well as information on housing. Um, the housing stock. It also looks at opportunities and constraints to housing, so environmental issues, governmental constraints, market constraints. And then with that analysis, it establishes goals, policies and programs to meet the city's housing needs. And overcome any identified constraints. I just wanted to summarize some of the engagement efforts that went on um, over the last two years. Um, there was a fair amount of outreach, a lot of it being conducted in twenty twenty-two. There was some outreach done in twenty twenty-three. Uh, there was a a booth at Good Old Days in May this year. As well as National Night Out in August. We also held a housing element advisory committee meeting in May. And then Planning Commission has been getting monthly updates from staff. But beyond that, um, the city conducted the Welcome Home Initiative. They had a number of other pop-up events at other community events. There were stakeholder interviews, an online survey. The Balancing Act tool, which uh, took input from residents on where they wanted to see the city meet. Um, its regional housing needs allocation where they they think housing should be um, identified throughout the city. Two community workshops were conducted. And um, I believe there was also a fair amount of door knocking that uh, went on as well in twenty twenty-two. So a pretty robust outreach um, compared to other jurisdictions, at least that I um, am working in right now. So the site inventory, uh, this is a pretty integral part of the housing element. It's something the state pays close attention to when they are reviewing the document. And basically, it is used to show how the city um, can meet its regional housing need allocation arena. And as you're probably aware, the city um, received arena allocation of one thousand one hundred and twenty-five units. Which are distributed based off of income levels. And then in addition, um, a recent law, this uh, this cycle SB one sixty-six. Requires cities to include an additional buffer in the site inventory. Um, typically, they they like to see a fifteen to thirty percent range. So with a twenty percent buffer placed on lower and moderate income units, uh, the site inventory in the draft is. Planning for about twelve hundred units. So how how can the site inventory um, show to the state that the city is able to meet its arena allocation? So first, we look at any pending or um, recently approved projects in the city. And we can count those units as credits towards the arena allocation. We also look at accessory dwelling unit trends and we can project those out over the next eight years. The city, because of primarily because of the water issue, has has seen a pretty high number of accessory dwelling units permitted each year. And then after after those two, we look um, at any sites that allow residential uses. We first focus on vacant sites. And then we look at non-vacant sites, either with ability to add new housing units to it or with redevelopment potential. And then if needed, we identify sites that would be rezoned to either allow residential uses or allow them at a higher density. And when we're identifying sites, there's a number of things we need to consider. So we need to consider in any environmental constraints on the sites that we're looking at. We need to consider um, capacity, so we need to make sure we're using realistic capacity numbers that are consistent with recent trends. Um, and then for lower income sites, uh, we need to make sure they have a certain size over half an acre and less than ten acres. And they have at least for the city of Pacific Grove, a density of twenty units an acre or greater. So those are some of the characteristics that we we looked at um, when identifying sites. So now I'm going to go into some of the draft sites that we've identified, um, starting off in the the downtown district. Um, so this district was identified in the Balancing Act tool as a location where people wanted to see. Uh, more housing on some of the underutilized lots, lots with parking lots. Um, it's in close proximity to jobs and transit. Um, so in order to to um, meet the city's arena allocation, the site inventory and housing element. Is recommending um, within the downtown district, an increase in density of forty-five units an acre. And then with that and the identified sites shown here, um, which are also laid out in appendix A, all of the sites. Um, we identified sites that could accommodate about a hundred and ninety-three units. Ninety-four of those very low, forty-three low, sixteen moderate and forty-two above moderate. And then in the central earthly district, um, as you know, there's a number, a variety of of uses in this area and residential uses are one of the allowed uses. Um, and a number of the sites were considered underutilized based off of existing zoning standards and. Regulations and showed potential for redevelopment with mixed use and housing. So within this district and these identified sites, about forty-nine above moderate units were identified. The Forest Hill District, this was another um, area. And during the Balancing Act tool that residents um, express an interest in seeing housing in this area. Um, a lot of the sites have large parking lots and the existing structures were. Would be considered underutilized based off existing um, zoning standards. Um, similar to the downtown districts, we are recommending an increase in density up to forty-five units an acre. And so with these identified sites, the Forest Hill Commercial District could accommodate about a hundred and ninety-two um, housing units. Seventy-two very low, thirty-eight low, twenty-five moderate and fifty-seven above moderate. And then there were also sites outside of these commercial districts that were either vacant or underutilized or opportunity sites for housing. Um, some of them were identified in the Balancing Act tool as well. Um, of the twenty sites, about five were um, would be would be required rezoning. Um, specifically, they're they're zoned either open space um, or unclassified. And I will note, um, as you heard, Planning Commission recommended removal of site forty-nine, um, which is one of those five sites. Um, and so within these uh, sites, um. About seven hundred and thirty-five units could be accommodated. Two hundred and thirty-four very low, a hundred and thirty-nine low, hundred and forty-one moderate and two hundred and eighty-one above moderate. And then finally, um. We discussed looking at underutilized or vacant second story commercial spaces within the downtown district. And the city does have some experience. I believe there is a recent project of converting an existing. Uh, commercial structure to residential uses, so we identified a number of sites um. With the potential for conversion to residential on the second floor. And we used an assumption that the units would be about a thousand square feet, which is relatively conservative, considering typically. Multi-family um, mixed use units are typ- typically smaller. And so with these identified um, sites for office conversion, about forty-one units were identified. And so to summarize, um, with the accessory dwelling unit trends, the um, one project that we. Identified in the city that's recently been approved pursuant to SB thirty-five. And the vacant sites that I just went over, the city um, could accommodate about fifteen hundred units um, with the within the draft inventory. And that's about um, two hundred and thirty-four units above um, the arena and the buffer. So it's succeeding both the city's arena allocation and buffer, um, which provides some some flexibility as we move through this process. And just briefly, affirmatively furthering fair housing is a a new topic required to be included in the housing element this cycle. Uh, pursuant to AB six eighty-six, it basically requires fair housing to be incorporated into all aspects of the housing element. So the site inventory, making sure we're not concentrating units in one specific location. Um, within the programs and then it requires a pretty robust um, fair housing analysis. And that analysis looks at five different categories of fair housing. It looks at enforcement and outreach, so essentially making sure. Residents are aware of their fair housing rights and people are following uh, fair housing laws. Um, segregation patterns and trends, so racially, um, economically and then familial status, um, various uh, factors. Looks at racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, which the city does does not have any of. Disparities and access to various opportunities, uh, education, uh. Environmental issues, economic opportunities. And then any disproportionate housing need based on certain groups. And based off of the the full analysis, the city then needs to identify what the main contributing factors are for fair housing issues in the city. And then establish meaningful actions to overcome those which are um, outlined in program twenty within chapter three. Um, but similar to to most coastal cities within the state, one of the main fair housing issues is. The inability for lower income residents to to afford to live within the city, just the high the high cost of housing. So chapter three, the uh, housing action plan. Um, basically, it builds upon existing goals, policies and programs in the current housing elements. And it's it's the roadmap for the city to follow over the next um, eight years during the sixth cycle to meet the city's housing needs. So these are the the six overarching goals within the housing element. Um, and again, these were built. Built upon from the existing goals and tweaked and improved a bit. Um, so the first goal is to support and preserve the city's existing housing and residential neighborhoods. Um, the city is is pretty built out, as you know, so this is kind of the goal that points points to that. The preservation or provide diverse, high-quality housing choices appropriate for all residents at all income levels. So making sure there's a variety of housing types and specifically housing that is affordable. Mitigate governmental and infrastructure constraints to the improvement and development of housing for people of all income levels. A lot of the re- rezoning requirements within the general plan is seeking to to implement this. Expand housing opportunities for all, including lower and moderate income households. Affirmatively furthering fair housing for all. And ensure resource efficiency in new and existing housing units. So again, the city's um, action plan is goals, policies and programs. And the programs, um, most of them include a timeline. And many of them include an estimated number of either households or housing units that um, we are estimating that the program will try and implement. And the reason for for including those metrics is one, the state's requiring that um, to make sure that they are able to track. That the city is making progress to their goals during the annual review process. But it also serves as a tool for the city to use as well to make sure they're they're meeting their their goals that they've set within the housing element. So these are just a few of the programs within the draft housing element. Um, the preservation of affordable housing units that are existing. Adequate sites for Rena, so this is focused on the site inventory and it's pretty robust. Zoning code amendments either to meet state um, laws, new state laws or to overcome any identified constraints. Density bonus and affirmatively furthering for housing as I just spoke to. Planning Commission recommendations, so as um, Joe mentioned, we went to Planning Commission on October fifth and twelfth. Um, these are their recommendations during both of those hearings. So first, they recommended removal of site forty-nine, which is the the Noah building at thirteen fifty-two Lighthouse. Um, and so this was recommended from Planning Commission as well as numerous uh, comments from the public. They recommend removing references to Project Home Key. And then finally, recommended city councils submit the housing element to HCD with um, their identified edits. And then the Planning Commission also identified four additional sites to consider if needed to add to the inventory. Um, just to have in the city's um, back pocket, as they said. Those were the Country Club Gate Center. Um, the Safeway, the side with the Safeway. And the Andronico's um, mall site. They also wanted to include the, I believe it's called La Porte Mansion. Um, during the meeting, I wasn't, I wasn't able to hear the address, so I I didn't catch that that what that site already is in the inventory. It's site fifty-seven. So essentially, we have three additional sites um, that they identified for for review. And then I did want to mention that during the Planning Commission hearing, they brought up. There's a discussion of buffer of whether it's um, too large or if we should add more sites to it. And so with that discussion, we we reevaluated some of the sites to see if there were any potential sites to remove if we wanted to. And site fifty-two specifically came up and that's the site with the city's community center. So right now it assumes fourteen above moderate units on it. Um, and so by removing it, it would also reduce the number of sites that would require a ballot initiative. Um, if it's included in the inventory because it's currently zoned uh, open space. So I just wanted to bring that up for for discussion for you all um, during this during this meeting. Excuse me. And then finally, I want to go over next steps. Uh, so we released the housing element for the required thirty-day public review, which ended yesterday. Um, and then we have a required ten days to respond to those comments, which we will respond to them in appendix D. Uh, we're now coming to you and Planning Commission for these study sessions. Um, we are. We are here a bit ahead of schedule. I think we were planning on coming to the November first hearing. And so the next step would be to submit to the state for their ninety-day initial review, which would last until about February. We would then revise the draft based on their comments. And then in April, around April, hold the adoption hearings. Now, if we could, if we are able to speed up that process between February and April, we definitely will. We just wanted to build in some flexibility in case anything comes up during the review or something else happens. But if we have the potential to speed up the schedule, we we certainly will. And then based off of any additional comments from Planning Commission or City Council, we'll make any edits and then submit the adopted draft to the state for their sixty-day review and hopefully certification. And with that, I believe I will turn it back over to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Staff has no further comments at this time, so I'll pass it back to you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone wishing to make comment on on this housing element, please, on this item, please come forward. There's about nine empty seats in front. Want to have have a seat, be comfortable. Welcome.
As I said to the Planning Commission, this is absolutely absurd. This report, and I find it a little disingenuous when we spend two hundred thousand dollars and we got nobody in person here for this report. Nothing was mentioned tonight about Mission Mission Linen. I thought that Planning Commission, I was, it was my understanding that they added that for it not to be, and this is absurd. The idea that you're going to tear down the community center and put up fourteen housing units, and I don't know how far that's going to go because there's deed restrictions on that. The concept that you're going to cover that playground and the community center, why don't we just go for Caledonia Park? You know, no buildings are there, you know. So why is it that we've chosen the community center but not Caledonia Park? So I need an explanation for that. Also, it was said that there was outreach, that there was knocking on doors. I'd like to see a record of that because Ms. Tam at the Planning Commission said she wasn't part of the process, so she doesn't really know if doors were knocked on or who knocked on them. That's a little bit problematic with this. The fact that we're not letting everybody in the community know that these hearings happened at the Planning Commission, and this hearing is happening tonight, especially those people that live in the neighborhoods, where you're talking about changing the entire dynamics of them is absurd. And to look at this report and see that they say the adult school, which is also known as Lighthouse Avenue, Lighthouse School, that it's owned by the city. I'm not sure when we bought that, but we don't own it. There's almost no mention about deed restrictions, which both that property and the David Avenue property have in them. There's problems with behind the movie theater and that it was a parking district. Also, we just gave to the city just gave to the guy to build low-income housing there, just gave him ten parking spaces for forever. So I'm not sure where the disconnect is, but I would really like to see a record of when Rincon or Ms. Tam actually came to town and how much time they spent here. Because Ms. Tam said most of their places that were picked out were people going on the computer, which I didn't even know this thing existed, so it wasn't publicized too well, going on the computer and picking out where they thought stuff should be built. By the way, Andronico's isn't also isn't entirely in Pacific Grove, and how that hasn't gotten through is beyond me. The problem is, there is no historical knowledge anymore in planning in the CDD or anybody we got working for us, and they're not making any attempt to learn the history of Pacific Grove, nor reach out to people that know the history of properties. They totally missed all the places that are along the railroad tracks, which you could build all sorts of places down there. There's huge tracks of property. So at some time, the people that are on this list need to know, and the people that are in this neighborhood needs to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Well, I'm going to follow Dan Miller, former councilman, former planning commissioner, longtime PG resident. That program we just saw on Zoom was such a wonderful soft sell for a most egregious situation that Pacific Grove is in. Everybody's just sitting here going along with the state mandate, which is totally ridiculous. Were you paying attention to some of the words he used? We have to avoid risks, or we're going to lose state funding. So they're hanging a carrot over your head. Go along with this if you want the state funding. If you don't want the risks, otherwise we'll impale you. Okay, so some of the people I've talked to think this is a great thing because they're under the illusion that there's going to be a lot of affordable housing for people who are objecting to their constant rent increases and property increases in Pacific Grove. And I call that an illusion because there's no, there's so much to this so-called mandate that I couldn't summarize all the errors in three minutes. And you didn't give any one person ten minutes to voice any opposition. I don't know if you were required to. So I gotta I gotta suggest you and the community that you take a look at two really good websites to get some further information on the other side of that ridiculous soft sell. We're going to build in parking lots downtown. Let's build in a parking lot next to the Grove Market. How about Trader Joe's? We can build up there, or maybe in front of Lucky's, we can build there too. Wouldn't that be nice? Let's replace those parking lots with projects. Are you kidding me? And he said it was such float off his tongue so easily among some of the other shortcomings Mr. Miller pointed out. I couldn't even begin to have enough time to criticize this. So I want to recommend that you look at two websites. One is called Our Neighborhood Voices, O U R, Neighborhood Voices, all one word, ourneighborhoodvoices.com. And another really good local one is D G Lives, one word, D G L I V E S dot org, where you can get a little more information, because that presentation was just right out of the Pied Piper, stroll you down the lane and over the cliff and drown you. As a city, as a community, we're going to destroy your town and make you think you're going to get affordable housing. There's going to be so little low-income housing available in this program that it's a sin to even use that word. So thank you so much for letting me speak. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Steve Hawk and thirteen fifty two Lighthouse Avenue is what we're talking about, and it looks very positive for that. I just wanted to point out that the petition's up to one thousand eighty people. And I just want to say a few words about some of these people that they're not numbers. And so these are things that I got expressed to me. Residents and visitors who love and appreciate the unique qualities of Pacific Grove. Historians who value the properties, ocean science and climate research, cultural and military history, which is all on that land. Art lovers who recognize the genius of the Rachel mural and what it symbolizes of our marine and fishery history. Indigenous people who look upon this coastal land as archeologically and symbolically significant and sacred and do not want it violate it yet again. And conservationists who know the irreplaceable value and importance of open space today and for future generations to come. So of those thousand eighty people, they were very expressive, the ones that I talked to and the ones that left notes. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Jeeba, our candidate resident. I just wanted to urge you to uphold the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission to remove the Site forty nine for its historic, significant historic environmental, cultural, and zoning restriction reasons. I also wanted to say the draft housing element as presented would change the character and historic nature of the city. The last hometown, the city of homes. A city of homes needs recreation. And I'll mention Site fifty two, which contains the tennis courts, a public park in addition to the community center. For several years, the city has made part of the park unusable by not watering the lawn and turning it into just dirt. Not required of public recreation lawns, as I understand. Families and children used to play on the lawn, so please consider that site as well. I also want to say, I followed, I know this is not blasphemy, but the city of Carmel's housing as reported in the Pine Cone for many months. And I would think, I wonder why I haven't heard anything about what we're doing in Pacific Grove, and they were like having second stories on commercial buildings, et cetera. So I just wanted to say that there are a lot of vacant commercial buildings downtown and on Forest Avenue and all over, really. And I don't think that's looked at at all in this. And the second is that there's housing that's zoned R three or R four slash commercial. And historically, the city has allowed those to be changed to commercial. Even in my own neighborhood, there's two large lots that are were really nice houses on Forest Avenue that are now commercial. So I don't think this housing element, these consultants actually looked at any of that as something for you to consider. So I just wanted to add that. And Point Pinos land has been protected federally since nineteen fifty one and eighteen fifty one, excuse me, and later by the city through four resolutions over the last almost sixty years. In nineteen sixty five, the council passed a resolution regarding the preservation of the Lighthouse Reservation at Point Pinos. The last one was in twenty twenty two, just over one year ago, and continues to provide guidance. And so I think the city's breaking with history, and I I'm really glad to hear that you're considering understanding the need for open space in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I grew up in this town. My sisters grew up in this town. Everybody played in this town, including my daughter, who went to Forest Grove School. Also went to Pacific Grove High School and all of her friends. So having this open space and having the community center is extremely important to these children growing up in this town. We don't want to
Excuse me, could you speak?
We don't want to lose what we have available to all the children to play. And it's very important that the community center stay open, as well as what this lady said with the lawn and everything and taking care of everything in this town is very important. I don't know if you have the people to do it, but maybe we could get volunteers to do it. That would be a really good way to do it. I'm also Esalen Native American. So I'm also speaking for my Esalen ancestors. And just to let you know that the property, the NOAA building, is extremely important. And I will get the paperwork for you that has been written in the past where anything owned by the government is not supposed to be sold to anyone unless it's offered to the indigenous nation that lives in the area first. This is a well-written document. I will find it, and I will bring you a copy of it. So I am very happy with what the Planning Commission said and what we said to them about keeping this property and keeping it from being overly developed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Stan Mellon. I'm a thirty-year resident in Pacific Grove, and I just want to say that like the three previous speakers, I support the removal of Site forty nine from the housing element. And to add to what they said, I I live in that area. I walk in that area often. And I would imagine putting eighty-plus housing units on that site would have a a large traffic input impact on that area that would be quite negative, and it's really one of the main assets of Pacific Grove. So I hope you see fit to remove that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Barbara Palmer, and my husband and I bought a home here in Pacific Grove three months ago. Moved from Colorado. We love it here. And one of the things we love about this town is how much of it has been preserved. So it was very disappointing to learn that the new owners of fifteen thirty two Lighthouse are requesting to rezon the NOAA site in order to build low-cost housing. This is an archaeological parcel of land. It is believed to not only hold ancient artifacts, but to be a sacred burial site of the Native American people of the northern California coast. How is it okay to rip up and plow through their sacred land? Haven't we, the white people, desecrated enough of what was once theirs in the name of progress? I don't know about you all, but I would not take kindly to the idea of my ancestors, my dead relatives' graves being torn up and paved over with houses. Excuse me. Isn't it important that our town, which we take so much pride in, show respect and honor the sacred ground? I propose that the NOAA building at thirteen fifty two be created into a museum and a learning center of dual purpose for marine science and for the history of the tribes of the indigenous people who inhabited this area, the ones that were here first. A museum and a learning center involving marine science and the history of the Native American tribes would be both fitting and serve the greater good. Creating such space for public learning may be very well-qualified, this property, for eminent domain. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. White Palmer, husband of Barbara. We, as she said, recently moved from Colorado and came here and understood California values, open space like Colorado does. We were shocked to see the Lighthouse NOAA property put on a chopping block with its beautiful open space. We went over there and looked at it, and we were really stunned by it. Gorgeous views, the ocean, of course, lighthouse, there's old growth forest, it looks like, in the backyard. You got the magnificent murals. And I just can't imagine taking bulldozers to that to make affordable housing. It just seems, well, I won't say what I'm thinking, but you you probably get the drift. It's beautiful property. It's zoned open space. It should stay zoned open space, and we ask that the Planning Commission unanimous vote be adopted by this council. They listened to hours and hours of testimony and and really did their homework and and reached the correct conclusion, and we ask that their conclusion be adopted by this council. The numbers also paint a pretty clear picture. There's eleven twenty-five units is the mandate. Well, the NOAA property was eighty-four units. So you take those away, and that leaves one thousand and forty-one units. Rincon, at the second Planning Commission hearing, said that they went back and reviewed all of their inventory and found an additional hundred and fifty units. That's apart from the buffer. So that adds up to one thousand one hundred and ninety-one units. If I do my arithmetic correctly, subtracting one thousand one twenty-five, I get sixty-six units that are just gratuitous. They're not needed. So it's obvious that the NOAA can be dropped out. Rincon was clear that NOAA could be dropped out. The Plan Commission says that NOAA should be dropped out, and we hope that this council will too. The three additional reserved properties that the Planning Commission identified had further acreage available. So it's just, it just doesn't make any sense to pick on poor the 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 it just doesn't make any sense to pick on poor um, the, the, the Lighthouse property um, uh, in, in such a beautiful open space. I ask that the planning commission uh, vote be uh, adopted and I thank the council.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, I'm Danielle Gray. You may remember me from, I, I live on David Avenue near the school, um, referred to as site fifty-four. Uh, first, I'd like to say that uh, the uh, based on my past experience, when I hear the word robust notice, I can only think of uh, what I, you know, with my nine-year-old grandson called Baloney. And I would use something else, except I'm in a public forum. Um, there was not a robust outreach. I found out about David Avenue being involved today because I called uh, somebody familiar with this uh, project professionally and asked um, if Noah was going to be included because I thought that was ridiculous. And uh, he said, by the way, David Avenue is too. So that was the first we heard of it. And I would like to ask the council in the name of due process to continue this hearing so that our neighborhood can be notified and appear. This is not fair. We had absolutely, you have a three hundred ninety-five page document. And fortunately, I know how to do research and I was able to Google David in that three hundred ninety-five page document and get to the heart of it in about twenty minutes after I heard about it, that it was included in that uh, three hundred ninety-five page document, which according to Google takes eleven point one hours to read. Anyway, uh, the balancing act tool that he referred to is an obscure reference to apparently some public uh, input that you had to know about it to get involved. I didn't see any kind of door-to-door knocking as Mr. Miller went through. And um, what they note in as to um, site fifty-four, I'm sorry, I have allergies. I'm not sick. Not, not now, anyway. Um, was that uh, one hundred ninety-one housing units uh, could be installed there at that property, which is um, a little less than sixteen acres total without impacting the charter school, which takes the lion's share of the acreage. So that means our, our de facto park, what we refer to as Salma Interfield, if you recall a few months ago. Um, suggests that our only de facto park will be wiped out. And I realize this is uh, it requires rezoning. And it will take a public vote to do that. But um, I want to get in on the ground floor and say we adamantly oppose that in our neighborhood. We deserve a park. We're not the, the uh, the unwanted uh, stepchild. And uh, I really suggest that this be continued so that our neighborhood can have input on this. And I, I'm going to point out before I sit down.
Thank you.
I knew about Noah because it was in the paper. David Avenue wasn't.
Welcome.
I'm here to express my, express my strong support for developing affordable housing within the city and the need for initiatives to facilitate this process. Specifically, I would like to address the housing element and the support for developers to construct projects on city-owned property and to provide water for affordable housing. I work for a local development company and we've requested to bring affordable housing before the city, only to have doors shut on us. The process to obtain funding for affordable housing roughly takes two years before construction can begin. And it's already a difficult process. Affordable housing is a critical issue that affects many members of our community. We must proactively address this issue and ensure our city remains accessible to people from diverse backgrounds. To this end, I commend the city of Pacific Grove for its efforts in developing the housing element as a part of your general plan. This element lays the foundation for creating affordable housing opportunities crucial for the city's growth and prosperity. You should also explore opportunities to partners with, partner with developers who are willing to construct affordable housing projects on city-owned property. This will be a win-win situation for the city and developers as it allows us to efficiently use available property and resources while addressing the pressing need for affordable housing. By providing incentives and support for developers who focus on affordable housing, we can encourage the creation of more such projects within the community. Moreover, I understand the water bill building can be a limiting factor in affordable in, in all housing development. I encourage the city to explore more options for providing water resources to support the construction of affordable housing projects. I'm also aware the city has allocated or water allocated specifically for affordable housing. This may involve examining water allocation policies, identifying, identifying potential water sources and collaborating with the planning department to make water allocations available. In conclusion, affordable housing is fundamental to a vibrant and inclusive community. I urge the city of Pacific Grove to continue addressing this issue, including implementing the housing element, supporting developers and creating affordable housing. By so doing, we can make significant strides towards ensuring that Pacific Grove remains where everyone can afford to live and thrive. Uh, thank you for your attention to this matter. I look forward to seeing positive developments in the city's housing initiative. And to close with any, as with any goal, without actions, nothing will happen. And if you keep doing what you're doing, you keep getting what you're getting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Welcome.
Thank you, Mike Gibbs of Pacific Grove, talking for my own, on my own behalf. But you know, a lot of passion about this. I sat through the planning commission meetings. I don't think there's any way on God's green earth that this city council or this mayor is going to put the Noah building back on any kind of a site list for any development. May happen, but not with this council. That's not a, that's not a hill that you want to take. You can see the passion here. Um, that could possibly happen, but I don't think that's really the issue. We're not in control of our land use. We gave that away to Sacramento. We gave that away to certain powerful, very few powerful state representatives and state senators who have total control over what happens in a charter city like Pacific Grove. I'm going to say something that maybe is not too popular, but I don't think water matters when I Oda. I don't think anything having to do with the Noah building matters. I happen to love the building. Those murals are outstanding. They're real class. I don't want to see them go away. I don't think we control that. What controls this is money. It is privately owned property. If we wanted to do something, uh, Mr. Panetta tried to intervene on her behalf, didn't work, and it got sold to an out-of-state developer, a real estate person. So if you look at the property, eighty-four homes, times a million, eighty-four million bucks. You put them up there, that's what's going to count is the money. That's going to make the difference. And Sacramento will come down here and declare that that's going to be developed. We don't meet our goals. That's just, I hate to say it, that's the bottom line. It's about money. And it's about the property taxes that go along with that. So I wish that there was something that we could do, maybe a different city council will make a different decision. I don't think this one is going to put anything back like this property back on the site list. I don't see it happening. I think you're smart enough to figure that out. And you heard the people here supporting that. But it, to finalize this, it's not in our hands. It's in the hands of the people in Sacramento. And if you don't like what they're doing up there, pick some different people and start doing it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come to the podium. Welcome.
Maybe I'm the last one. Uh, I'm Steve Lilly. I chair the planning commission and I am here in that behalf, not as a private citizen. So I want to thank first uh, Mr. Sador and um, Mr. McGowan, and then Mr. Russell and Ms. Tam and Mr. Pyrick and um, Ms. Wagner and Ms. Vega for their help in, in putting together this draft and reviewing it with us on October fifth and twelfth. Planning commission reviewed that and, and took about five and a half hours to do so in those two meetings. And that doesn't include the time that each individual commissioner spent reviewing the three hundred and seventy-four page document or writing comments or questions for consideration in both meetings. We passed four motions and I think they've been reviewed, but there uh, is one that I wanted to go over. Since I wrote the motions, I think I can say what they are. Um, and that had to do with the properties we put in our hip pocket. And, and that should have read or, or did read that the property is known as the Safeway Site on Forest Avenue, the Country Club Shopping Center Site, Mission Linden Property and the La Porte Property be an alternative setting for the inclusion into a draft housing element in the event that other properties do not become available to fulfill Pacific Grove's Rena Regional Housing Needs Assessment of one thousand one hundred and twenty-five new housing units by twenty thirty-one. Uh, we found out or, or figured out later that La Porte was already there. So that's the three. We did not include the Andronicos in that because that is a partially, that site is partially in the city limits of, of Monterey. In fact, it's two-thirds, one-third, I believe. Um, we also agreed to provide a list of over fifty edits for use by the staff in preparing the final uh, draft housing element for submission, submitted to the state. Trust the staff to do that, and I'm sure they will. But it's, it's important that we understand we're between, as a city, between a rock and a hard space here. We have a state mandate. If we fail to meet the state mandate by submitting the plan on time, we will not only have the builder's remedy where any developer can come in and do certain things based on various parameters in the law, but we also potentially lose state funding in, in various capacities. We have to submit this thing. We could have sat at the planning commission and nitpicked it and we would have nothing. And I would suggest if you were to do that here tonight, we will end up with nothing. And then where are we? So we really have little choices, the previous speaker said. Uh, you know, I hate to say it that way, but that's the reality of it. So looking at the calendar that you saw earlier, I concluded at our meeting that with the hundred and twenty-day grace period on top of the December, mid-December deadline, that we would have until April thirteenth of next year to get it in and get it approved. But the best we can do, we would be thirteen days late, and I think we're going to have to work on ways to uh, maybe cut that down. So that, that's my, my remarks, Mr. or Mr. Mayor.
Right, uh, we'll now turn to our online audience and uh, welcome Kai Cader. Apologies if I mispronounced your name.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, uh, is this Kai Cader?
Yes, Kai Cader. Um, I just wanted to touch on the topic that that other older gentleman was discussing earlier about removing the lighthouse so we can make room for more low-income housing. And I think that's just a very poor decision to make. Um, when we put these public housings in our communities, you're, you're pretty much like lowering the property value of everybody else's homes because it's low-income housing brings low-income trash like illegal beaners from Mexico and and niggers and people that we just don't want here in Pacific Grove. So I think it will be.
Just hold, hold on. I'm like, what did he say?
My advice is to let him continue at this point.
Yeah, it's called freedom of speech. Uh, you should know about that unless you want to get sued. I, I, I do have a lawyer on retainer. So as I was saying, we, we bring these beaners and these niggers in here and.
That, that's, that's enough. Um, let's go on to the next speaker. We'll, we'll just not tolerate um, abusive remarks on.
Well, perhaps I need to say something.
It's going to be, yeah, please. I'm, you can say it more eloquently than I can.
Yes, under, under the Brown Act, um, individuals are able, um, during public comment to speak on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. And um, when it's an item that is um, on your agenda, um, they are entitled to speak to that item. Um, and so um, this gentleman, I, my recommendation is you give him another, another opportunity to speak and uh, to avoid uh, the racist names that he is using in his comments. If he continues with that, then my recommendation is that he be muted.
Yeah, we, he already had a chance. We objected. We stopped him and he continued. So he's had a second chance already. All right, let's move on to Tyrone Jackson, please. Welcome.
Yes, are you able to hear me all right?
Yes.
You know, I've been sitting here listening to the, the debate about the low-income housing. And one thing that always comes in my mind when I uh, hear these topics discussed, when I just think about how my city is using our funds paid by the taxpayers, the term that comes to mind to me is white privilege. And um, I'd like to read something I wrote about that while I was sitting here waiting on you guys and listening. And uh, it says, what is white privilege to me? You cannot speak about white privilege without talking about George Floyd and how Darren Shuman had the uh, privilege of being sentenced to life in prison when a criminal died of fentanyl toxicity while under arrest. Um, also about the Kansas couple who had the privilege of being arrested for simply holding their firearms in their front yard as violent Black Lives Matter protesters marched closer and closer to their house. Or how young white children are privileged enough to be beaten down by groups of children of color and being forced to use ridiculous, ridiculous terms such as children of color. Then when they get to the classroom after being given possible brain damage, they get to be told they are evil by default and that their black and Jewish classmates can do no wrong. Then in the next period, they get to be encouraged and manipulated into mutilating their genital and gaslit by their teachers.
Pick a speaker.
Right.
Right. Now, while he's muted, my recommendation is that you explain to him that his comments need to pertain to the item which is on the agenda, um, which is the city's housing element. And that if he does not restrict his um, comments to the items on the agenda, that he will be muted and not unmuted.
All right, will you please unmute Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson, do you understand?
Yes, I do understand. And I, I lost ten seconds while I was uh, while that was being explained there. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, and also I am speaking about the, the low-income housing. You know, the last time I tried to get low-income housing, I was told it would be five years before I might would be able to get into that unit. And then I recently ran into a friend of mine who is a friend of color. And guess what? He had been on the list for less than a year and there he is, moved into one of those exact same units. Once again, is an example of white privilege. That's the, the only actual white privilege that I know of. You know, I, I was attempting to just express some of my thoughts and, and reckon, uh, exercise my First Amendment. Is that all right with everybody here? Can I finish my statement? It's almost done. Uh, and it, and it brings me back to these poor white kids, you know, how are, just like I just was, who are gaslit by their teachers who attempt to usurp mentorship and parenting rights from their parents. And those same evil white parents get to be under surveillance by people like you all for merely showing up at school board meetings.
Time's up.
And trying.
Right. Rebecca Lee, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, um, I, a big thanks to the planning commission and to the consultants. Um, my comments are simple. Please do not let us utilize any open space for these projects. All units we need for the housing projects can be accomplished with loosening height requirements and rezoning. Please keep all open space as open space and unpaved. Um, I agree with everything Dan Miller said, except for the railroad sites, the railroad area because all that land absorbs so much rainwater, has so many trees, and also putting housing there would create a traffic nightmare as they tried to get out of town. I don't see a problem with taking up the existing parking lots, keeping the paved area um, as the parking lot and then building um, the structure, the housing on top of those. Um, also, we had touched on putting apartments above all the businesses downtown, the way Carmel and Capitola and other cities do, and I'd like to see that proceed. To support the sustainable modules going down the middle of of High Avenue. Hmm, um. But all the affordable housing, please, it needs to be on city-owned land, and it needs to be rented for city income. And to control the rent so the rent stays affordable and doesn't skyrocket when the property is sold. Thank you so much for all your work on this.
Thank you. Liz Gianni, welcome.
Thank you. Um, it's been a rough road to this draft housing element with a very deficient performance by CDD leadership. And a great number of. Serious mistakes to correct. I'm very glad that we are headed toward improved CDD. Uh, so I'm also very glad the city finally has a draft housing element almost ready to submit after. I'm sorry, careful review, very careful review by the planning commission, whose recommendations I urge you to adopt. Along with Jane Haynes' recommendations for corrections to significant errors in the history section. And for substitution of a cover depicting the Pacific Grove we know. I hope you will also assure that the designated tribes have been provided with the legally required consultation. That I wrote to you about. Among the strong reasons why the former NOAA property must be removed from the site inventory are one. This open space property cannot be rezoned except by a vote of the people for PG's municipal code. A petition asking for this site to be removed from the site inventory has almost eleven hundred signatures so far. And a D H E housing survey reports that. A clear majority of community members do not want to see any open space redeveloped or even considered. Two, the site is in the coastal zone and coastal commission approval of an LCP amendment would be required for rezoning. Highly unlikely considering that this site is designated Open Space Institutional in PG's. LCP with very restricted land uses due to its sand dune esha resources. As well as archaeological sensitivity and seen equality. Three, it is a designated sacred site for the Aloney Costa Noa and Esalen Nation. And in the process of being added to the city's historic resources inventory. Four, the proposed eighty-four high-density, very low to moderate-income housing units. Would not be near transit, schools, or shopping. The consultants have assured the city that Site forty-nine's eighty-four housing units are not needed in the draft housing element. Please remove Site forty-nine from the site inventory. And and uh, follow through on adopt the planning commission's other uh, recommendations and Jane Haynes. Recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy House. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, I've been a social worker for fifteen years, and I've just spent the last five years in Pacific Grove. Here and um, with my main experience for the first five years of my social working career. Has been with underprivileged children. And the last ten has mainly been with the unhoused as it relates to this city council topic there. And um, currently, I'd like to disagree with, I think it was about four or five speakers back. The lovely woman there who said she disagreed with the NOAA project, the NOAA building there. Because building these additional affordable housing buildings is not going to actually help out. Any of these unhoused people in the city. Pardon me, sorry? All right, that's what I thought. Um, can I continue, please? So like I said, I've been working with unhoused people for ten years as a social worker, social worker. Dealing with these people and their situation involving housing specifically. I find that unhoused people have a very difficult time maintaining employment due to socioeconomic factors. As well as with the small minority of them having other medical issues that happen to be an issue. But building all of these affordable housing units as another speaker previously said. All it's going to do is bring down property values in the city, and it's not actually going to solve the problem. Of housing and housing availability. The people who actually need this housing. They are the people that are underprivileged. Yes. One hundred percent. I can agree with that. But the fact is, these people need to pull themselves up by the bootstraps, and the people that. Need this housing are white European Americans, not these niggers and these beaners that are invading our.
Um, let's mute him. We we've already, we've.
You'll be on the previous speaker.
I'll hit her.
But well.
Ask the Jews.
Needs to be muted. Okay, so my advice to you is that you warn him that he needs to limit his comments to the item before us, which is the housing element. And that his recent comments have not been directed to that. And give him another opportunity, and if he continues not to focus his attention on the housing element, then. You could mute him and not unmute him.
But we've already given this admonition.
To a speaker, I know.
To previous speakers, I, you know, this could go on. Um. So I'm I'm, I think that the prior admonition is good enough for the rest of the speakers. They should have all heard it. They're online.
All right, that's that's your determination.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They've had their hand up, the some of these folks have had their hands up. For thirty minutes, so and and I I saw that hand up. Make on the recommendation that we only limit the speakers to the to the folks who raised hands and limit to only to those.
Yeah, so um, I think that's a good suggestion. Um, well, I don't know, can we uh? Stop adding. Hands? Or we'll just remember. When it gets down to. Uh, this is another one. Yeah, okay, Mary Adams. When we get down to Mary Mary Adams. Then we're we're finished with virtual public comment. There'll be no warnings at the first instance. That uh, someone makes a racist remark or strays well off the subject of uh. Of housing in Pacific Grove, then uh, mute them and we'll go on to the next person, okay? All right, so. Mr. Samsung or Ms. Samsung, you welcome, you're next. Did you unmute them? Okay, welcome.
Oh, hello.
Welcome. Go ahead.
This is Chris Thomas, and I'm a senior and a renter here, and I just wanted to speak to the people that were um. Saying they heard nothing about this or there was no outreach. Um, because I am so interested in this subject, I saw the um. Very first housing element advertised in the paper. Um, it was on the website. I think people could take some responsibility if their residence here is to get on the Pacific Grove website. Because these housing elements started last July. I attended both of those, and by doing that, I then um, was mailed. Information. Um, the housing element was advertised. In the library, on Facebook, on Nextdoor, in the free Carmel Pine Cone. Um. So I think some people have to just take some responsibility, and if you're not on any social media or the internet. It, there was a mailer that came out. Um, and there was also um, it up in the library. And again, the whole thing was advertised twice on the site. And of course, nobody at one sitting could sit and read through the whole thing, but I'm just saying that you could take some responsibility. Um, for something that means so much to you. And I also wanted to point out that at that very, I think it was the second housing element. We brought up the Mission Lennon at that time, and so I don't know how that could be. On the element when that owner at that time was saying he wasn't interested in in selling, so. Anyway. What I'd really planned to talk about before everybody was whining that they didn't know what goes on was the one thing. That I think that the leadership and um, city has kind of failed about is that there's not one ordinance. And um. Having any below-market or inclusionary housing or not one ordinance in new projects. That have to include um, a few units. And I think that's an undersight because that's how um, other cities um, common way to get. Um, something built in addition to partnering with some nonprofits. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Local Wolf, welcome.
James Stark Wolf, I'm a resident of the county. Pam Tanis, uh, who identified herself as Esalen and is on the elders council of. Esalen Tribe of Monterey County. I wanted to uh. Stand with her that uh, the sale of federal property is supposed to be offered to Indians first and uh. So I'll uh, I'll be uh, I've submitted a letter about that to the council and uh. That falls under the eighteen sixty-eight Fort Laramie Treaty uh, that uh, makes all uh. Public properties uh, initially to uh, tribal people uh, without um. Any kind of explicit uh, mention of of what uh. Uh, which tribal people, so um, uh. That's um, something that uh. Uh, what uh, has been. Historical in California from the. Takeover of Alcatraz, uh, Yak Yama, uh, D Q U, various properties and um. And uh, federal properties have been uh. Uh, occupied by Indian nations uh. By treaty rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Steinberg, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, listen, so I've been trying to talk for a long time, but I haven't waited. Okay, I appreciate everybody's comments besides the anti-semit, the anti-Semites, okay? Um, but you know, many people, you know, call me crazy for what I say, and you know how I speak the truth. And they're mad because I can't speak the truth. Um, I'm honest, you know, we have a lot of problems in our county. I'd like to address some of them. So look, I don't want to put the blame anybody, but um. You know what? I do want to put the blame on someone. It's always the Jews, you know, they think they could run the world and hoard them.
Mr. Steinberg, you've heard the ammunition. Okay, just mute him, please. And let's go on to the next speaker, Mike. Welcome.
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
So I got a few things to speak on about the housing plan here, but I just wanted to let the city attorney over there know. These speakers need to be admonished each individually. I'm a lawyer, by the way. You need to admonish them each individually. You can't just go back and use the previous one, just to let you know. It's uh, it's in the Brown Act. And the open meetings. So uh. You know, fuck these Jews.
All right, I'm just mute him, please. Um, let's go next to Chris Dionne, welcome.
Yes, thank you for giving the opportunity to speak tonight. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Um, you know. The homeless crisis is, you know, it's countrywide, wide. You know, we have people all over this, all over this country, you know, sleeping under overpasses and under bridges and. Um. Yeah, I mean, as a on a, as a city basis, I don't, there's not a whole lot you guys can do. I mean. Uh, you can do what you can, but. Um, you know, if the state doesn't just step in and help at all, and then the feds are just, you know, contributing to the problem. And then uh. I don't know, it's just, it's just crazy. Um. You know, people are dying from overdoses, but we have money for other things. Uh. People can't get housing, but we have money money for kids to get transitional surgery. Um, you know. You guys are uh. You guys can only do so much, and you know, the borders are overrun, and we got the ADL and all these other groups that are making all these. Uh, laws like the, you know, about diversity and inclusion and equity, but they're letting people die outdoors and freeze to death and.
You heard the admonition, please refrain from remarks outside of our housing.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to make remarks about the homeless crisis. Um, so just, just, just to end on this is that. You know, the city is focusing more on diversity, which means. Fewer white people, inclusion means exclusion of white people, equity means stealing from white people. But you're letting homeless people die, and it's because of the fucking Jews.
All right. Okay, moving on, uh, welcome Inga. Lorenzen Dahmer.
Thank you. This is sort of like a when we got Zoom bombed at that one meeting that had to be shut down. I can't believe. What's happening. Let's get back to our housing element, which um. Needs to move on. Yes. This is an unwelcome mandate from the state. I think we've stepped up to it in spite of a community development department that has been broken for some time. And I am speaking to our city of Pacific Grove, one uh, from changing consultants to God knows what. But I'd like to thank Rincon for uh, putting this together. I. Sincerely hope. They completely make. The corrections. That Steve Lilly of the Planning Commission pointed out. And that staff and Rincon follow through with that. And I sincerely hope that the council will approve also what the planning commission. Unanimously voted for, which is to remove the NOAA site from consideration. Most of these homes probably will not be built. Hopefully, some will. But we've certainly sat through. The last fifth cycle housing element with not getting our affordable housing. So I think truly the next step is going to have to be. Some sort of inclusionary. Ordinance. For a percentage or something else because. Expensive gentrified gentrified market rate homes. Are just not going to make it for this city anymore. We need to include. Other people. And that's really. I think we need to get this done. I hope that uh. It is finally on somewhat track and that the city council can come to to agreement. Because the planning commission very carefully went through this with the public. So thank you very much for all you're doing. And certainly the planning commission and Rincon. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy Walters, welcome.
Good evening, city council and the ADL. Uh, I just, my question is, if the native population of this country is low replacement, what do we need all this housing for? I don't understand. Um, that previous caller sounds like she needs to move to Mexico and go, I mean, you can go live there amongst all those shitskins if you'd like to.
All right, that's, you're finished. Okay, uh, Mary Adams, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I would um, love to see that uh, we get this uh, housing built in Pacific Grove. I would love to see removed zoning restrictions to affordable housing units as they relate to house height and district and parking requirements. I would like the lessening of restrictions that would enable us to receive grants and funding. And offer incentives for contractors to build multifamily and mixed-use dwelling dwellings. I would really love to see edits. I would really love to see edits of Jane Haynes on the history of Pacific Grove included. Per the public comments in the, at the planning commission pertaining to the inclusion of the history of the Chinese village and additionally including. Our history of covenant restrictions in that it affects our town's diversity today and. On a slightly different topic, I would love to hear from the city attorney about the Brown Act and hate speech. Because I really appreciate you mayor that you are stopping this in its tracks and I commend you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Nancy Parsons, welcome. She spoke in general public comment and I cut her off. Okay, all right, I did announce that. Public comment stopped at Mary Adams. Mr. Peric, am I okay at this point? We do only have one more.
I'm, I'm not, did you say you had one more speaker?
I don't know, it's. It's not, it's not, Nancy Parsons, welcome.
Thank you for taking my comments. I was trying to speak much earlier. This is a statement and a question that I have for the city council. I, I don't expect an answer. And I, I want to ask, why are you mayor and council or were you not standing up for the people of Pacific Grove? And saying that we don't want this forced housing. Or at least diminish it, the numbers so that we don't have eleven hundred, perhaps six hundred. Sacramento politicians are giving our land and community to big developers. The people of this community have not had a say or a vote for this forced housing plan. We have our own housing plan. We have our own zoning rules. So please, please stand up for this community as other cities, councils and mayors have. We don't want to lose our town or our coastal environment. It's a big development. And I don't believe for one minute, any of this will be very low or moderate housing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I did announce. That we were going to stop with Mary Adams. I added Nancy Parsons. I'm okay with stopping public comment at this point.
Well, we don't know who the other commenters are, so. My, my advice is, is this, you have given the admonition a couple of times, so whoever's on the call now. Would have heard the admonition, so you do not have to repeat the admonition each time. So I, I do think that if there are other callers that are on the Zoom, so you can see, I can't see if there's others. Have time constraints as well, can you mention that?
Let's, let's do, you know, with, with that counseling, let's do, the one, one person left. Mr. Sam Eddick, I hope you heard the admonitions. Go ahead, welcome.
Hello, are you guys able to hear me all right? My name is Sam, Sam Eddick.
Yes.
Perfect. I would like to first off, thank the city council for taking my call. Thank the public for being able to be here. And I would like to ask the city council why they are taking direction from the ADL and taking money from the ADL. This is within purview of city council, considering you are under their payroll. Is city council able to answer that? I have a FOIA request that proves that city councils across the United States.
My recommendation is the speaker be muted at the moment. He, okay, he apparently is talking about some subject matter that's not related to the housing element. My advice is that you tell him that he needs to limit his comments to the housing element and that if he doesn't. That you were going to mute him and not unmute him.
All right. Mr. Eddick, go ahead.
Thank you. No, the housing element here in the city is definitely a terrible situation. There are plenty of homeless people and unfortunate people who need access to housing inside of the city. And it does not excuse the fact the city council is being funded by Jews and the.
All right, please go ahead and mute it. That concludes public comment. Wow, it's a unfortunate first for Pacific Grove City Council. Let's take a ten minute break and return at eight fifteen. Yeah, I don't know how we're gonna handle it. I, Brian says he just. End Zoom, end Zoom, but I, I think that at this point, that's not a good option. Because you got like the Chinese. The blanket statement and, and if they go off topic, we just mute them. What I would like to do, I'd like is to. You know, you, you and you are going to. Anybody else.
I understand, apologies for interrupting. I understand the meeting is in recess, but it appears that some of the mics are activated and there may be some talking being picked up.
All right, we'll start off with council discussion. I'm going to kick it off. With a motion, two part motion, direct staff to remove site forty-nine. That's thirteen fifty-two Lighthouse Avenue from the site inventory. And to also remove reference to project Home Key.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Emilio.
Why was Project Home Key taken off? Just curious. Does anybody know why Project Home Key was taken off?
I can try to answer that. Let's see, our planning commissioner chair is gone. But it was recommended by the planning commission and I feel that probably the, the motivation. Was what had happened when Project Home Key was, was brought here. And the recognition that there were some issues associated with long term. Financing that weren't really addressed in that Project Home Key. All right. Maybe we have a vote, please, Ms. Goff.
Councilmember Emilio. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti.
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald.
Aye.
Councilmember, member Pudory.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Aye.
And Mayor Peak.
Aye. Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you. Further council comments? Are, are we too stunned by the, the outburst? Councilmember McDonald.
I didn't want to add it to yours, but there has been mentioned, and I didn't hear who had made the recommendation to remove site fifty-two, which was the community center. Was that, because it was only fourteen sites, was that the planning commission who recommended that or was that Rincon or?
Councilmember McDonald, that was a, a recommendation or a suggestion from staff for consideration by the council.
Just to remove the fourteen housing to keep the community some. So that would be one thing that I would be in favor of if we wanted to start somewhere else.
I'm sorry, the, the number.
I think it was fifty-two, correct?
Okay. Are the council on discussion?
This was the overall item.
Councilmember Pudory.
Yeah, I had a question. This is for the overall item, correct? We're discussing.
Yes.
And so I, I had a, actually before I get to the questions, I did want to thank everybody that has come together. To bring the housing element draft here. We are under a tight deadline and I know a lot of things have happened over the course of the year. Where we had to course correct. And so I appreciate. Everybody that has jumped in, including the planning commission to get things going. I, I had a few questions here just related to some of the items that I might not potentially gather. It appears to me that these are all potential sites, so these are still TBD. So we don't know what will happen to these sites until we actually start working on the. It it appears to me that these are all potential sites. So these are still TBD. So we don't know what will happen to these sites until we actually start working on the sites. Is that accurate? Uh, and I'll give you an example, like, for example, the Safeway parking lot has been brought up as a site for potential site for housing. Uh, is the owner interested in actually developing housing and at that lot? Has that been determined to make it a potential site? Uh, could could Mr. Sadori or or maybe Ringcon can answer that?
Uh, Councilmember Dury, the the property owner at this time has not been approached regarding the addition of that site to the inventory. So that would need to be um done at some point in the future.
Okay, so and and so that is my understanding with all these, but these are potential sites. We still have to uh work with owners in some cases to see if they're actually. Um, eligible for housing or not. So and and with that being said. Uh, would the HCD treated the same way, which is we're submitting fifteen hundred odd units for consideration? But will they go with the understanding that these are potential sites and things could change in the future?
Uh, Councilmember Pudory, I believe um HCD understands that and perhaps Mr. Russell could clarify if I misstate something here. Um, but the housing element. Uh, um identifies, uh, like you said, potential sites, um, underutilized sites or vacant sites within the city that could potentially. Uh, be viable or feasible sites for um housing. Um, whether or not those sites are actually developed over the next eight years is not something that is a a definite decision at this point.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and that is my understanding to it. Thank you for clarifying that. Uh, the other uh, the other item I had was uh. Generally, while you were. There's obviously uh some open sites came into consideration, etc. Was there any work done to determine how many of these sites required ballot initiatives?
Councilmember Pudory, there are, I believe, um. Four sites remaining with the removal of the NOAA building site. There are four sites remaining uh that would require a ballot initiative, um, one of which is zoned. Oh, and three of which are zoned U, and those are sites forty eight, fifty two, fifty four, and fifty eight. And Mr. Russell, if I missed one, please um let me know or please let the council know.
Thank you for that. And and again, I just wanted to find out to council that there are there are moving parts here. There's plenty of things in in action. These are still potential sites and so. Things can change in the future. The other item I just wanted to, just knowing the fact that we're. We're riddled with like a water kind of deficiency too. Now we're talking fifteen hundred odd like columns, um, and that accounts for X amount of acre feet of water. Was was that? With fifteen hundred units, has there been any kind of analysis to say these units will account for so much water? And therefore we need to have so much water in place, whether through local water projects or by requesting for Monterey on water to have these housing units developed? Is that? Is that analysis something that we will do or has been done?
Councilmember Pudory, um, I'm going to ask Mr. Russell to respond uh more directly to that question, but I believe the um. Short answer is that um water analysis or water needs um for these units were were not. Uh, part of the analysis for the draft housing element.
Okay, and and I want to find out to council that this is another consideration that we need to think of as well because. Uh, unlike possibly other counties, we we also have the situation built into this element that we need to take into account, which could impact potential numbers in the future. Um, with that being said, I am I'm supportive of the fact that uh we have this housing unit, uh, housing element draft in play. And and I recommend this for approval. I I would also like to point out that I'm I'm supportive of the uh comments that were provided by. Majority of the public, including comments that talk about uh Pacific Grove's history edits. I'm also supportive of the fact that um. A couple of organizations have provided comments to us through Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, uh, the Land Watch of Monterey County. Um, and I appreciate really well all the public that has come and reviewed this from top to bottom to provide the edits that they have made. Thank you.
Councilmember Beck.
Your honor, um, I just have a couple of questions, probably for HCD or maybe Mr. Sador. First, I do want to thank the planning commission because I know. Sitting through both of those meetings, they took um did their due diligence and took their time. Um, I I believe uh HCD mentioned that the downtown area, it was. Uh, that the people wanted to see the development. I'm I'm curious who were their people were. Um, and was it from the model that we did online? Uh, for creating areas for for development? And then um. The other question I had a couple of questions, but I know when we met last year, the housing element, the deadline we were we were told was December of twenty twenty three. Um, so now it looks like we're May twenty twenty four. What happens between those five months? Does builder's remedy come into play or do we get a pass because we've submitted?
Councilmember Beck, uh, to answer your first question, uh, the um. Feedback uh that went into the draft housing element analysis uh was received uh through surveys and the balancing act tool. And just the general outreach that conducted by staff over the last approximately year and a half. And regarding the builder's remedy. So um. If the city does not have an adopted housing element uh by December fifteenth of twenty twenty three, then uh the building uh builder's remedy would apply. And would remain as an issue until the city adopts the housing element. And uh, perhaps uh Ms. Wagner could expand on that.
Uh, sure. Thank you, Mr. Stewart and um um mayor, members of the council, I'm Mary Wagner. I'm with Burke Williams and Sorensen, um, your city attorney's office. And I'm happy to add a little bit more information on the builder's remedy. As indicated, the builder's remedy applies if the city doesn't have an adopted housing element by the statutory deadline. Which is December fifteen, twenty twenty three for uh Pacific Grove. The uh, there's a so-called grace period, which is a hundred and twenty days uh from the statutory deadline for adoption. For HCD to review the housing element and determine it's in um substantial compliance with housing element law. If you do not receive that certification from HCD within that timeframe, there's a shorter period of time for the city to adopt. Any necessary zonings to provide the capacity to meet your RENA. So the builder's remedy applies from the the date that the city. Is statutorily required to adopt the housing element and remains in play until you have an adopted housing element. There are um, there are opinions out there that it also remains in play until your element is certified. And that issue is actually being litigated and there aren't any reported cases yet on whether that's actually. The interpretation that a court would um give to that provision of the Housing Accountability Act.
Thank you for that answer. So just to be clear, um, mid-December, we would be in builder's remedy at that point, which would mean. A developer could come in, present plans. How would the process work within that window before we get certified?
So um, a potential housing project proponent could submit a preliminary application to the city. To uh have a project on, in our opinion, commercial or uh. Or commercially zoned property that allows for um residential uses or residential property. That's another open issue with respect to the builder's remedy. Which types of property it applies to, but someone could submit a preliminary application, which essentially if it is complete. And that means it includes all the statutorily required elements, that it freezes or vests the development application with. The standards that are in place at the time the application was submitted. They then have um a period of time. Um, it's a few months to submit an actual development application. And if it's consistent with their preliminary application within certain parameters, they could proceed. Um, hopefully that answers your question.
It it does. Thank you very much for that one. I have a couple more questions too. Um, I think um Councilmember Pudory had asked this question if we had met with the owners and the sites identified. So it it's my understanding, we have not, we've just. Identified these sites. Uh, my other question is, what happens in an annual review if we have not met our RENA numbers?
I'm happy to speak to both of those, um, Councilmember Beck, if you would like me to, and then allow other staff members to participate as well. With respect to the first, the first question on um kind of owner interest uh on sites that are included in your inventory. That's one factor that HCD takes into consideration when it looks at the realistic development capacity for a site. Um, owner interest is helpful. Uh, owner owner disinterest is not helpful. Um, and in some circumstances, you don't have an owner indication one way or the other. It's also important to keep in mind that we're looking at an eight-year planning period. And um property owners can change, people's opinions can change about what they want to have happen with their um with their sites. Then with respect to your second question, do you mind reminding me what that one was?
Um, yeah, so what happens in an annual review if we have not met our RENA numbers? Yes.
Sure. So, you know, as you well know, um, every year the city is required to report on its compliance with its housing element and it's a detailed report that goes to HCD. That indicates, you know, projects that are um submitting for building permits, projects that have received certificate occupancy, etc., etc. Midway through your cycle, the housing element cycle, so about four years in, HCD will assess the city's progress toward meeting its RENA. And if you haven't mentioned RENA goals, then you're subject to SB thirty five. Um, there are also other uh provisions in the housing element law that allow HCD. To look at whether or not you're complying with your housing element. For example, you know, adopting your rezoning programs. That's a big requirement for HCD. They will keep an eye on that. And if this, if cities do not um uh live up to the the obligator, to the promises they've made in the housing element, HCD may take a look at that. And could ultimately decertify your element and even ask the attorney general to look into that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think these other questions would be for Mr. Sador, um, or maybe not. Um, I'm curious why we didn't have photos of the locations identified. Because I was going by list and driving by and it would have been nice to have photos of those sites that have been identified, proposed sites.
Councilmember Beck, um, that that is something that we could uh. Um, consider for future inclusion.
I think it would be helpful. Thank you. And then also, um, the ATC site was not included. Is there a reason for that?
Councilmember Beck, the uh ATC site um is a city-approved. Project that is currently under appeal to the coastal commission and also involved in a possible lawsuit. So I think um. I would defer to uh the city attorney to perhaps. Expand on on the prudence of including that site or not in the sites inventory.
Thank you.
I think you just heard from Mr. Sidor why it wasn't included.
I think so. Thank you. Um, I think that's all I have. The other, the other thing I wanted to mention was meters. Um, and the moratorium on meters and then also with these developments require larger meter sizes? And has that been discussed at all?
Councilmember Beck, the water moratorium is um. Uh, mentioned or addressed in the draft housing element in several locations. The uh, and also um CDD staff did meet with HCD staff several months ago. Uh, HCD staff actually came to Pacific Grove uh for a a visit for one day uh to speak with staff and to and to see. Um, um, gain a better understanding of the city and the the challenges and constraints in Pacific Grove. And one of the um main topics of conversation during that visit was the water moratorium. So HCD staff is aware. Of of the moratorium and the the constraint that that uh imposes on the city and on future development.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Clady.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I've got a question following up uh from Councilmember Beck to Ms. Wagner. Um, and this is kind of regarding some of the statutory requirements uh of some of the various bills. One of them you mentioned at the at the midway point, uh, four years through the housing uh cycle. Uh, there'd be an assessment on how we are doing as far as fulfilling our RENA obligation. And we have separate categories, you know, market rate, etc., etc. So do we have to be hitting every one of those categories? Um, or is it just a an aggregate?
It it's more focused on your affordable units, your lower and um moderate income units.
That's what I thought. Okay, it's pretty likely based on our track record, uh, way things are going. We've actually, in the fifth cycle, we did develop more housing than. We required in the aggregate, but in affordable housing category, we were, we were, we didn't meet our. Uh, we didn't meet our target. So in that case, if that were to happen again in the sixth cycle, then at the four-year. Uh, point, the midway point of the arena cycle, we would actually find ourselves in builder's remedy condition. Assuming that's true.
You, the the builder's remedy provision, the Housing Accountability Act is a different issue than the SB thirty five. Um, streamlined ministerial review in the event that you're not um keeping up up with your housing element obligations to meet your RENA. So the builder's remedy issue applies if the city does not have an adopted housing element. Um, and as I said, there's an argument that people are making that it doesn't, it applies until you have a certified housing element. Once you have that housing element in place and you're trying to make progress towards your RENA. That's when the provisions of SB thirty five, which has now been extended by um SB four twenty three, um, could come into play.
Okay, so what provisions would come into play if we are, don't meet our RENA numbers halfway through the cycle?
So if you're put on the SB thirty five list, which HCD publishes, um, the uh, the city. Would have the potential of having um projects submitted that are subject to streamlined ministerial review. If they meet a number of criteria in the government code that include affordability levels, um, it has to be on residentially zoned or mixed-use. Zoned properties, and there are a number of other criteria. One of the criteria that Pacific Grove may be particularly interested in is the removal of um what used to be a prohibition against utilizing SB thirty five. For properties that are um on coastal, in coastal zones, uh, AB four, excuse me, SB four twenty three removed that. Um, prohibition from uh SB thirty five.
Okay, so these are streamlining review as opposed to builder's remedy. Is that the distinction?
It is indeed. So it's it's a by rights, you know, ministerial um review process so that if a project is submitted and it meets the criteria to qualify. For streamlined review under SB thirty five or now SB four twenty three, the city is limited um to uh. You can have a public hearing. It's not even a hearing. It's a public review process. But you're limited to applying only objective standards and it's not a discretionary review. Um, so it's it's somewhat confusing, frankly, to the public and to um decision makers, uh, but some jurisdictions process them at a staff level.
Okay, the also following up on one of the questions Councilmember Beck uh inquired about was. Uh, the amount of time that will be given to develop our zoning uh uh are basically are to rezone. Uh, as if we don't get this done within the hundred and twenty day grace period, get a certified housing element with hundred and twenty day grace period. Uh, we will be essentially, we only have a year to develop the zoning to implement the housing element policies, is that correct?
Correct. So i- if you, if you are certified within that grace period, you would have a three-year period, but if you are not, um, you have a one-year period from the statutory deadline to adopt. So that would be December fifteen, twenty twenty four. I apologize, Councilmember Clay. I cannot hear you.
Sorry, I inadvertently muted myself. Um, you seem on top of this. What is the likelihood? Uh, if we were to submit. Uh, if we were to submit uh, one of the proposed schedule to actually get a certified housing element within that hundred and twenty-day grace period? I mean, maybe miss, uh, maybe staff, some might have some comment too, but it seems pretty unlikely, wouldn't you say? And that we should probably be planning for a one-year uh, zoning effort and not the three-year.
Based on my experience in other jurisdictions who are um, in a different housing element um, timeline than Pacific Grove. You know, a number of jurisdictions that I'm working with needed to have their housing elements adopted by January thirty-one of this year. Um, my experience is HCD tends to take the full ninety-day for their initial review. Um, and when you look at HCD's reporting website, they have a compliance and um, review uh, tool on their website. They have a number of um, housing elements that they are still reviewing. And they tend to prioritize them based upon when their, their statutory deadline is coming up um, to complete that review. So as you know, you have, you know, they have ninety days for this first go-round, which if you submit, um, you know, soon at the end of the seven-day uh, business day period, you're looking at um, November, December, January, February, to end that ninety days, or hundred and twenty, yeah, ninety days, excuse me. Um, and then they're likely to have findings, they're likely to have uh, issues that they want the city to address. Some of them may be relatively easy to address, and some of them are going to take a lot of analysis. And as you know, um, from reviewing your housing element, it's not a plug-and-play document, I like to say. You know, if you, if you have to make modifications in one place, they often lead to different analysis and modifications in another place. So it's a pretty comprehensive update to the document. So while it is um, by calendar possible, I think you're right, that planning for a one-year zoning um, requirement is prudent. And then if for some reason we get, you know, our golden ticket early, then uh, you can be really happy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wagner. Um, a couple of questions for um, staff, and I'm just going to start basically at kind of the beginning of the document and work my way forward. There have been comments made about the inclusion of a section detailing briefly detailing uh, Pacific Grove's history. That, the general plan already includes uh, within Chapter Seven. This is Historic and Archaeological Resources, already includes a very good history of Pacific Grove. So I would just say, strike uh, the history that's provided on page four and just rely on the history that's already provided in the general plan via Chapter Seven. Um, Mr. Sador, in, I'm looking now at page one dash. Where is it? This is the vacancy table that's provided. It, it basically centers around the use of ACS data, American, what is that, Census Survey or Ameri- Are you familiar with the ACS data? This is on page uh, one dash fourteen, Table one dash fifteen, vacancy units by type. So it's mentioned uh, that the total housing units in Pacific Grove in twenty-ten are seventy-seven hundred and twenty-three. And in twenty-twenty, it's eighty-five fifty-nine, that's a difference of eight hundred and thirty-six houses or dwelling units. We didn't develop that number of dwelling units. So the question becomes, why are we using ACS data? Um, because it's an estimate. And it always comes, when I've looked at ACS data, it always comes with a margin of error, which is plus or minus several hundred, you know, two to three hundred units. So perhaps if we are going to use ACS data in this document, we should include the margin of error. Otherwise, if you look at this, if someone just reads this and makes, they think this is actually legitimate numbers, it gives a false impression of the number of units that were actually developed over that ten-year period. Okay, that is just a small point that I've had. Um, vacancy, in fact, that kind of falls, falls out of this table. So if you look at AMBAG's numbers, we have a vacancy rate of about seventeen percent. That comes from the Regional Growth Forecast Document. And City Council uh, developed a goal, one of the goals is, it was Goal Four A, to explore and assess the grandfathering of existing non-conforming ADUs. I would like to see that council goal integrated into the housing element as, and probably put that under Program One. And the idea here is, is that there is, and people have spoken to it earlier. It's very unlikely we're going to develop a lot of housing through new construction. However, we do have a fairly high vacancy rate, it's not as high as Carmel, but seventeen percent is still pretty high. And that there are houses that simply just sit, they've been inherited. Um, people don't want to go through the hassle of renting them. Well, maybe there's an outreach program that the city can get involved to assess and to grandfather uh, some of these non-conforming ADUs, but also just to bring in vacant homes into the rental market. And I think it's a lot easier to develop rentals uh, based on existing s- uh, stock than in, uh, instead of uh, building new. So I would like to see that housing, that City Council goal come in as a policy into the housing element.
Which, which one?
So I think Program One would probably be the right one, Housing Preservation and Rehabilitation.
I'm, I'm not mayor, I think.
That's on page three dash three.
I thought you were referring to Council Goals.
Oh, I am. Council Goal Four A, to integrate that into.
Okay, that's what I was asking for, A, explore and assess the grandfathering of existing non-conforming ADUs.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I'm not sure exactly which program that should be put in, but I would suggest perhaps Program One.
Yes, Councilmember Clady.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, there is a, an, excuse me, an action under Program Nine on page three dash nine, under accessory dwelling units, for facilitating, facilitating the legalization of illegal units.
Yeah, but tha- that says facilitate legalizing illegal units by removing the deed restriction requirement. Is that, that's different from what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is to go out and actually assess the grandfathering of existing non-conforming ADUs and also vacant property. So basically, you, you, we've got vacant inventory that we want to see rented. Let's get a policy or program put together that can do through outreach or whatever, get some of these vacant units and some of these non-conforming ADUs uh, into the rental market. So that would be um, perhaps that's where Four A belongs, is in Program Nine. But the idea of bringing in some of these vacant homes, and according to AMBAG, we're up at seventeen percent. Um, I'd like to see that incorporated in the housing element. As far as Measure D, this is nineteen eighty-six, that requires a vote of the people to rezone parcel zoned U, unclassified or O, open space. Um, there's nothing in the actual housing plan that talks about the requirement of that vote. So is, how would HCD know, reading this housing plan, know that that vote is going to be required? And for instance, where is it set as a timeline? Or, you know? So that's something that I think should be explicitly included within the housing element, the requirement for the, uh, of the vote for those parcels. Um, Program Five mentions the city has a pending project that will provide ten housing units. What site is that? Is that five twenty-nine Central?
Uh, Councilmember Clady, the ten uh, unit site is um, I believe it's uh, three nineteen Forest, up on Forest and Pine and Grand.
Great. Well, speaking of Forest and Pine, in Program Four, it mentions that there are fifty-four housing units and three housing projects that are deed restricted. Aren't the, aren't the per, uh, the units on Pine Avenue between Fountain and Grand, aren't those deed restricted as well?
Councilmember Clady, I would have to um, look at that.
Would, at least when they were.
In more detail to.
Okay, that, that might be worth including. Um. So on page three dash six, this is uh, Program Five. Down the last bullet point, it mentions uh, city-owned sites. Uh, Site Fifty-two, the community center, and Site Fifty-eight, the Pacific Grove Adult Education Center. Site Fifty-eight isn't a city-owned parcel, that's owned by the school district. And then kind of following up on Site Fifty-two, the community center. You're saying that staff's recommendation to remove that from the list?
Um, Councilmember Clady, that is um, staff's um, suggestion at this time for council consideration.
And what's, what's the, what's the basis for that recommendation or suggestion?
Um, as uh, Mr. Russell stated during the presentation, the um, uh, we looked at the um, buffer uh, that was built into the draft housing element and uh, attempted to identify other sites that um, may not need to be included uh, in the um, sites inventory. And uh, that was one site that um, stood out because it uh, only um, accounts for fourteen units above moderate uh, income units. And it's on a site that is um, zoned open space.
Okay, so it would require a vote of the people, and that's just one less parcel you'd have to take out to a vote, is the idea? But that still leaves the three parcels zoned U to take out to a vote, right?
Correct.
Okay, the Cal-Am uh, reservoir, and then the school, old school sites at David Avenue and Lighthouse. Has the school district been approached? Are they amenable to actually doing um, development on their parcels? The uh, Lighthouse and the David Avenue site?
Councilmember Clady, I believe the school district has been approached, although um, I was not the staff member who contacted them to find out uh, their, their view on development of their sites. So. Well, yeah, I can't answer that direction, I mean, question directly.
Yeah, it is kind of an interesting process, because if I'm like HCD, and I get this list of, of parcels, and it's like, where's, where's the intent? You know, where, where, and I guess that's somehow embedded in the understanding, maybe in previous conversations between staff? Or is there actually a prepared document or a list that we're keeping that says, yes, owners have been contacted and, and they're interested in development?
Councilmember Clady, I'm not aware if a list has been maintained. However, um, I do know that uh, based on staff conversations, there are a number of property owners who have been contacted or who have reached out to the city to um, state that uh, they would um, be interested in having their site uh, listed on the sites inventory. And uh, not all of the property owners have been contacted, but um, some of them have. And uh, whi- which ones, though, um, I'm not able to provide that information.
Okay, is that, is, is that some deliberation or discussion that we can expect between HCD and staff once we submit? Are they going to want to see some kind of confirmation? Does HCD want to see kind of?
Um, I'm going to defer that question to uh, Mr. Russell or Ms. Wagner, I, I don't believe so.
I, I'm happy to, to chime in and then let Mr. Russell or Ms. Tam um, jump in as well. She also has extensive experience working with HCD. Um, you know, back to a prior comment. So HCD wants to see a realistic capacity and an, an analysis that this development is likely to occur. So it's one of the factors that they'll consider in determining whether the city has adequate sites to provide the capacity to meet arena. Um, so again, owner interest is good, uh, owner disinterest is not helpful. Um, but it isn't necessarily um, the, the only thing that HCD looks at. So if we don't have an acknowledgement one way or the other, they look at other factors like the size of the site, the history of the site, what it's currently being utilized for, if there are underutilized portions of the site. So there are a number of factors that will go into the analysis as, as to whether or not the sites that the city has included provide the capacity to meet the Rena.
But they're not going to ask for a list, or they're not going to ask for verification of any kind to justify these sites?
They, they may ask for owner interest, they want to see all the analysis that's currently in your housing element that goes through each site and describes, you know, how it's currently developed, how it's currently utilized, how it's zoned. Um, and, and if there is owner interest, they would be interested in that as well.
Okay.
And, and sorry, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, if you had something extra to say.
It's also, it's just to add, uh, uh, because I think it's important to the question that you're asking, is that's also why you have a buffer. Because you don't know if, if these sites are actually going to develop, you're providing incentives and you're providing programs to um, to, to attempt to have these sites develop, if you will. But that's also why you have a buffer, is so that if certain sites don't develop and other sites are available to provide that capacity for the Rena.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving to Program Ten, Water Supply. Uh, second bullet uh, point mentions participate in regional water project through monthly meetings. Uh, by regional water project is, are you referring to the D-SAL plant? And, and what monthly meetings and with whom are we, are we um, are we contemplating there?
I'm going to ask um, Ms. Tam or, or Mr. Russell to answer that question.
Uh, yeah, if I may um, kind of elaborate on that, and there was earlier a question relating to water rights. Um, I just want to mention that Rena, for most adequate site's capacity um, issue, um, HCD does not consider the water as um, issue. You, you, whether you have water rights to build the units or not is a separate issue. But um, even if you don't have water rights to build the issue, it doesn't accept you from the requirement to find adequate sites. And should there be uh, water available in the, in the future? Um, and so what HCD does require is, if you do not have enough water rights currently, then you do um, the best you can to uh, look for um, to expand water capacity or availability in your region. Um, through collaboration, through conservation um, methods. And so that's the only requirement in the housing element, it doesn't uh, require you to find all the waters um, at this point to build the units, it's just have to, you just have to try your best. Um, so relating to the monthly matters uh, uh, meetings, we are generally just speaking about the different efforts that the region has um, in terms of um, um, coordinating water um, availability through the region. It would be water districts, a different water districts, a lot of projects. Now, um, it may be, that's our understanding that staff uh, was attending monthly meetings. Um, but if that is not the correct um, uh, understanding, we can revise that.
Okay, that, I, I wasn't aware of any. I was aware, however, the third bullet point talks about lobbying for the use of water uh, allocations to support affordable housing. There was uh, some effort with the State Water Board to acquire seventy-five acre feet. Um, but as, but that was rejected by the State Water Board, they did not uh, provide that uh, that loophole in the cease and desist order. And in the, the cease and desist order, as I understand it, and which includes the meter moratorium, is still in effect. And there's no mention uh, at all in this housing plan regarding one of the, one of the conditions in the cease- One of the conditions in the cease and desist or condition two. That limits the access of water for development based on a change in zoning or use. And a lot of the, quite frankly, a lot of the, um, sites that are being. Uh, proposed do require a change in use, they require, and the change in use is defined as going from commercial to residential or vice versa. And none of that is really, it's this big roadblock, it never gets mentioned, uh, at least not officially. And it's just going to keep coming up. But it would have been nice to see that mentioned in the housing plan here. So that there is, people have a reasonable expectation of what. Are on water and, and, and vis a vis the cease and desist order, so. And we're going to be living with season to assist order for at least another three to four years, I would guess. So that's, that's a suggestion. The, um, program skipping a program fifteen, short-term rental of private homes. Um, it, one of those suggestions is to link STR fines with, uh, the city's affordable housing budget by the end of twenty twenty-five. Is there any way, and maybe this is a question for Tori, because it's kind of the financing. Uh, may perhaps a financing question, is there any way we can accelerate that? I mean, why do we have to wait to the end of twenty twenty-five to, uh, to try to help fund this affordable housing budget?
Uh, I, council. Councilmember Coletti, um, I'd have to look at that a, a little bit, uh, further, I'm not sure of what the complete process would be, but that's something that staff can look into.
I would suggest we, uh, before submitting, look if we can accelerate that, that, that deadline or that point. Um, I think we should do that as soon as possible if we can, and my understanding is currently is that. The, um, enforcement of our short-term rental ordinance is basically done on a complaint basis, is that correct? Mr. Sador or Tori?
Councilmember Coletti, that's, uh, a part. And the other part is we, we do have a, uh, uh, a contract for, uh, web review. Of advertisements for short-term rentals to try and, um, identify, uh, rentals that have not been properly licensed.
Well, I, I think we should be proactive in monitoring any unlawful advertising if, uh, especially if there's going to be an economic. You know, benefit to an affordable housing program, so that would be one thing to consider. And then, um. Lastly, it was mentioned by. Quite a few people actually during public comment. The, um. There's no include, there's no mention of an inclusionary housing ordinance in the housing plan. So I'm going to give you a, for instance, kind of an example of what's happened here in PG. Uh, the Holman's building, we, we approved that for twenty-five luxury condominiums. And we didn't develop one inclusionary housing unit. Um, what in this housing plan would prevent that from occurring again? What program would, 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 would solve that? And I, I don't, I didn't find one, so I went looking for it.
Yes, councilmember Coletti, the, um, city, uh, at this time, I believe, does not have an inclusionary housing. Program or ordinance and, um. You know, the projects like the Holman Building are. And, and probably would not be real common in Pacific Grove, a, a large subdivision or condominium project like that. So, uh, with smaller subdivisions, uh, which is generally how inclusionary units are, uh, required. You know, with a, a small, two or three or, or four unit subdivision. Um, you, you wouldn't, uh, necessarily get a full unit or maybe one unit. And, and even those, uh, small subdivisions are, are pretty uncommon in Pacific Grove because. Of the, uh, built-out, uh, nature of, of most of the city. And other restrictions on larger properties, uh, say in the Asila Mardun's residential area. So, um, uh, having said all that, I'm just not sure how effective. Uh, an inclusionary housing ordinance or program would be. Um, for the city in terms of generating, uh, inclusionary or affordable units.
Well, there's mention right in the housing plan of the ten, ten-unit project. And if we're going to be building eleven hundred and twenty, or planning to build eleven hundred and twenty-five units. It seems to me that there can be a benefit by having an inclusionary house, housing ordinance and. It's, it's kept us from doing what we should have been doing for years, which is when big, larger projects come along. And I consider eleven hundred and twenty-five units in the aggregate to be a, quite a large project. Uh, not all of them are going to be, you know, perhaps ten units or more, but we, I don't think we can ignore it as a potential to generate. The housing requirements, um. And there are condominium, you know, projects that are getting built, so, um. I think in, in inclusionary, not just condominiums, but any, uh, any project that is going to be market rate or whatnot. Uh, should, should be held. Uh, you know, they should be obligated to have, uh, some inclusionary housing that comes along with that. And if we don't put it in ordinance, if it's not part of the municipal code, it will not get enforced. And I just don't want to keep seeing these missed opportunities, so I would put that down on the list as. Another possibility is to have a consideration of an inclusionary housing ordinance developed as part of the housing plan. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, pretend so.
Thank you, um, so I don't, I'm not going to take, we've been on this for a long time, so I have heard a ton of comments and they were all, they were all pretty informative, especially, you know, the public. Um, I had a lot to say regarding addressed two major things, removed two sites, uh, from this plan that we're having proposed. Um, so at this time, I'm going to move, I'm going to make a motion and I realize I'll be some talking about it and stuff. But I'm going to make a motion to provide direction to staff to transmit the draft housing element. To California Department of Housing and Community Development as my first motion. Do I have a second on that?
Could I make a comment on that first, um, councilmember, uh, McDonald made a, a comment, uh, earlier. Um, and I think it was mentioned by others about site fifty-two.
That was my second motion, it was going to be.
Well, then you're one step ahead of me as usual, so I'll, I'll shut up.
Sorry, so do I have a second, do my first or second?
Uh, I'll second it.
Sure. Both motions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, because I did, I wanted to do them separately on purpose. So, um, now I just want to make a couple of comments. For us, turn it over to the mayor here, um, I think that. I heard a lot of, actually good ideas on housing, um, councilmember Coletti raised a lot of ideas and what I thought. Some of them, though, I thought were, we needed a inclusionary housing ordinance, ordinance, I'm sorry, it's getting late. Perhaps we do need that, um, but I don't think, I'm not sure it really needs to, I, I don't think it needs to be in the, in this housing element because. Of the deadlines that we have to meet and we need to get this thing rolling basically at this point. And it's also been, um, vetted by numerous parties, uh, you know. From, from, for a long time now and our consultants and we've paid a lot, people a lot of money to look at it, so I think. And then there was one other idea and I'm sorry, I, I can't remember exactly what it was, but I also flagged that in my mind as this would be great, we should. Work on these, these different, um. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not blowing smoke, I really think that inclusionary housing is one thing we could think about, and then another thing is. The ADUs, thank you, Your Honor, uh, the ADUs, so the ADUs, I looked at the programs that when Luke was talking about the, the ADUs. I looked at the programs, I didn't think it really fit into any of the programs listed in the. The document that we have in front of us tonight, which is voluminous, but you know, there's like a, a portion of it that just deals with the programs. Um, but I do think that that's something we can talk about and we can work on that as a council, so. Those are like my two takeaways, I know there was some, something councilmember Beck said, I can't. I could do, don't recall it right now, because we spent a deluge of information tonight and then the. The bombing we had earlier was not fun, so, um, I think that's where I'm at with it, those, we got a motion and that's, I'm going to leave it there, thank you.
Um, councilmember Emilio.
Councilmember Nick. I'm tired too, uh, now, did you, uh, did you go through the, uh. Entire, uh, motions on this document? I do have a couple of questions I have on this real quick.
Uh, well, no, I just made the two motions.
Okay, and I second them, but, uh, first of all, thank you, uh, this Norv, uh, and the people that are on Zoom here. Um, for your comments and, um, presentations and all, and I just, uh, just a real. I, I'm for this to continue, uh, having the staff go to the state with this, uh, uh. Draft, six-cycle draft housing element, uh, but I, I'm just wondering about the, uh, the light, the lighthouse. Uh, where the cinemas are there, behind there, was that included or anything on that parking lot? Uh, and I might have missed it, but is it included?
Yes, councilmember Coletti, it is included as.
That's all right, he's collecting, I'm Emilio, that's okay.
That's all right.
That's all right. Yeah, no, no, I, it's included though. Okay, super, I, I had some other questions. And there's a huge poverty rate in the city of Pacific Grove, I had the statistics on it, but it's getting late and I just wanted to, uh, move on. Uh, with this, unless someone else had any comments, um, or you do, okay.
I'm, I'll, I'll add that I'm endorsing, um, the motion to transmit this document to HCD. And to remove, uh, site fifty-two, which is the community center. And, and also I, I concur, um, with, uh, Mayor Tim Smith's, um. Action comments on the two items raised by councilmember, um, Coletti. I think we can use the, the two items were an inclusionary housing ordinance, which. Has been suggested and kicked around for years and I appreciate staff's. Position that the impact may not be much, but I think we need to keep that idea alive. And, um, and also the, um, the council goal. That councilmember Coletti brought up for a explore and assess the grandfathering of existing non-conforming ADUs. And I'm happy to keep that out of this housing element because we need to move this. Voluminous document forward. And there's no reason that, um, we can't be also working on these items, um, without this document, so.
So I have something that may help, unless, uh, Mayor Tim Smith has already thought of it. Um, which is, um, you've heard from councilmember Coletti about the history, uh, issue. Um, and replacing it with the history that's in your general plan, I'm not sure if there was concurrence by the council on that.
There was, I, I'll just jump in, um, I've had, uh, discussion with Mr. Sador. It's entirely appropriate, the planning commission and the public provided a lot of input. And, and we've heard suggestions and right from the dais tonight as well, um, regarding the history and, and other. Um, other areas of the document that are, uh, non-substantive. And I think, you know, our professional staff and consultants are well-equipped. As time permits to make those, uh, changes as, uh, um, as they see fit. Um, we, I don't think we need to make a motion, um, to write this document and look at all the words. Particularly the ones that are, uh, not impactful, so.
Well, the, the question then is what is getting submitted to the HCD because the. Uh, outcome of the meeting tonight is going to be what? Version of this housing element is going to the HCD, is it the version that was presented to you tonight in this, with this, uh, agenda report? Less, um, site fifty-two and then otherwise.
Forty-nine. And the removal of project home key.
Right, so those three, so it would be as submitted to you tonight, less those three sites. Was what is to your direction is for the, um, to be submitted to the HCD.
So it's my understanding that, um, staff at its discretion can make. Um, simple editorial changes, non-substantial changes to the document. Given, given the time to make those and still get this. Um, get this off to HCD, we're, we're not approving every. Dot, dotting the every I and crossing every T, it's, this is not that. My understanding is that's not this exercise tonight and, um, you know. Typographical errors, well, we're not going to sit here and go through anything we find, just leave it to staff.
Councilmember McDonald and then councilmember Beck.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think that there was the recommendation from the planning commission to answer, um, your question, Mr. Perick, that. The recommendation would be to remove their sites, we've added site fifty-two and to also make the changes because. Uh, the planning commission came up with a list specifically of those typos and corrections for, um, history errors. Um, and so my understanding was that our motion would include adopting what the planning commission has put on their list of those corrections, which would correct the history, does that sound right?
No, there's, it, there's no motion that. On, on the table right now to direct staff that they must make. All those changes that the planning commission, um, provided, that. That's not in the motions that were made tonight at this point.
Well, I guess that's my question, do we want that to be in the motions that we make since the planning commission carefully went through and that does correct a lot of the errors that. The planning commission and the residents recognized.
Okay, I was trying to make the point, I, that, uh, we should leave it to the discretion of staff.
Is that acceptable?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not sure. Frankly, what that means, uh, to be honest with you, because you, you've had a housing element that was submitted to you with the agenda report. Um, I, I'm not sure to what extent it incorporated all of the planning commission comments, I guess my question to Mr. Cedar is, did it?
Perick, it did not incorporate, uh, comments as of yet, those revisions will be made after this evening's meeting.
Okay, so would then the direction be that the housing element that the, that the staff is going to submit to the HCD be. The one that was presented as it was drafted and, and then, um, revisions are, are to be made by staff. To that housing element based on, uh, the input from the planning commission? Is that the direction?
At staff's direction, um, at staff's discretion.
I think the only clear motion is the, this, this is the version we want to send. Less the three sites, as you pointed out, um, and, uh. I think i- if we're going to go with the planning commission stuff, I think. That's beyond the scope of what we're, we, what the motion in the second is for sure. And I don't have a encyclopedic knowledge of the planning commission, uh, fifty edits or whatever, I don't know. I, but I, are you, are you saying, uh, Mr. Perick, that we would need to, uh, move those edits into?
Well, I, I think the staff needs more direction than to say, you've changed it however you want to. Um, I, I think that it, it should be to either, uh, uh, submit. The housing element as it was drafted and circulated, um. Without comments and input from the planning commission or to, to say that it would include the comments. I'm not saying you have to go through each of the fifty typographical comments, but there were certain other comments, I think, that, that may have been made and, and, and I may be wrong. That were made by the planning commission that whether you want to include them or not.
All right, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we direct staff to consider. The planning commission's edits or errors. Plus the recommendation by councilmember Coletti. And incorporate that. And incorporate that into the transmittal at your discretion of the, with the time constraint, recognizing the time constraint. So there are guardrails on this. It's the planning commission and, and what Councilmember Coletti has recommended. But we leave it to staff for the discretion.
And also the, right, just the plan that's written minus the three sites. As a previous motion.
Yeah, we, oh, that's.
You want to just add to it, right?
We haven't voted on that. Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm a little disappointed. We've been discussing this for, as a council, for fifty-five minutes, maybe sixty minutes. It's a hurry us up and rush. I personally would love to see these corrections made and brought back to us just before we give the blessing to send off two weeks. We've been waiting for this. And again, what does a two week difference make? As you can see, we're going to be in builder's remedy anyway. Um, I'm just, again, I'm disappointed. I'm really disappointed. This is a very, very important housing element that we're approving. And I feel like everybody's saying, you know, we're running late, we're doing all the, it's nine twenty. This is very important to our community. And to try to rush it, and I trust staff with making the adjustments. But again, I would love to see it in print. I was even disappointed. I didn't see red line with the, uh, original housing element of what the planning commission, um, suggested. Again, we're, we're hearing about it now, but there's some great recommendations that need to be inputted to this that I don't think waiting and having staff do this inputting and bringing it back to us just to say, yes, this is everything we made our changes on. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Everyone feels that it's getting late. It's not late to me. This is a very serious topic that we're discussing and a housing element that we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on, that we entrust our staff to do this. But I also feel to our residents, we need to bring it back and just give it a blessing. It's two weeks. Two weeks is not going to make a big difference. I'm sorry. Everyone feels rushed. Thank you.
Councilmember McDonald.
I guess to that point, my understanding was that this has to come back on November first and be submitted. So will we have the version with those recommendations at that time? So we can say, yes, this meets the requirements, what we wanted, we now submit.
Yes. Councilmember McDonald, yes, that would be available on November first.
Okay. So because I also feel like I, I know that we have a, a, I'm sorry.
I, I believe Councilmember, uh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, the meeting on November first. I thought I heard something and I might've misunderstood that we're waiting to submit on November first for it to come back to us for something, but maybe I misunderstood that.
Well, depending upon, um, the city council's direction, staff uh, would be ready to make whatever changes are directed by the council and submit that corrected document or draft to HCD, um, by November first.
So if we brought it back, that would be one extra day. Assuming that we approve it as is. The reason I'm asking is because my understanding is there's also a ten day review. So there's a ten day window that they're required to take before we can submit from now anyway. And we're talking about, I think fourteen days instead of, it might be more than fourteen because of the end of the month thing, but.
Councilmember McDonald, it's, it's, uh, ten working days. So it's, um, actually November first would be the first day that the city could submit the document, the revised document to HCD.
And that might be where I was kind of thinking, okay, does that mean it's coming back to us? So if we're having a city council meeting on November first, would there be any problem with hearing it on November first with the changes as Councilmember Beck is asking, just to ensure that everything that we expect to be there is there because I do agree that we owe that to the residents to make sure we do this right. Sometimes rushing things makes them not right in the long run, and that hurts us. But I guess my question is, does it hurt us in any way if we take that one extra day? Meaning it's, we couldn't submit before the first, could we submit on the second based on hearing it at the council meeting on the first?
I might suggest we ask Mary Wagner about that. I thought there was a ten day, uh, period between the date that the council took action and the date it submitted to the HCD. Mary, do I have that right?
It's actually ten days from the close of the thirty day public comment period. It's, that's the ten business days that we're talking about right now. Uh, it, we're not required to bring it back to council. Um, but if that's the council's direction and, um, uh, prerogative, then of course we will. I mean, you're, I think you're talking about a day. If there are additional revisions that come out of that council discussion, um, then it might take a little bit more time, but, uh, hopefully that answers your question.
Well, let me, let me ask it this way. There, there's some discussion about having the changes made and having it brought back on November first with the changes redlined or however, they're made. Would then the staff, after the November first, on November second, be able to submit the, uh, housing element to the HCD?
Yes.
So I guess what I'm saying is based on that knowledge, doesn't it make sense to make sure that we are verifying that everything that we are expecting that we're approving is what we are indeed approving? I, I, I agree that it needs to be put through if we want to. Ideally, we would have three years to get our zoning done because I'm a little concerned about how long that might take and, and will we meet the one year deadline? But being that we're talking about one day, I'm more inclined to, to question whether it makes sense to allow us that opportunity. Um, and the one question I hadn't gotten a chance to ask yet that I think may or may not play into this is we had one speaker and I suspect there will be more in the future now that this question has come up about the David Avenue School. There's, there's issues of deed restrictions from Pebble Beach and for it being educational that, that we'll have to address. But it wasn't clear to me on the map. When I was looking at that, my understanding was it was right on the corner behind the David Avenue School and not Salamander Field. Can I get a clarification on that? Because that wasn't what was shown on the map. And, and I'm asking because I know we had a big outcry when we were looking at the skate park in Salamander Field and people losing their park there. And I think that that was what was voiced today. And I, I expect as word gets out that that will be something that will be, that we'll be hearing and it will need to address. And so I figured now is probably the best time to address that. And I believe that was site fifty, uh, sorry, fifty-four?
Uh, yes, about fifty-four.
Yeah. Because when I was looking at the map, I got the impression it was just the length of, because there's three properties there. There's three schools essentially. The David Avenue School, from my understanding is the one right on, um, David Avenue and is at Congress. Um, so the, it, it would be like the first school on site fifty-four, but you're right. It actually looks like you might be talking about the entire property and taking away that entire open space from that community. And, and there's already been an outcry that that is the only open space they have and we'd be removing it from them. And so that's why I wanted to clarify what that site actually entails.
I believe that it is the entire, um, property area. However, um, just because, uh, again, because units are identified, doesn't mean that all of those units would be developed in, at some point in the future, um, or the entire area, um, uh, or vacant area developed. Uh, perhaps, uh, Ms. Tam or, or Mr. Russell have, uh, more to add to that comment.
Yeah. Cause I'm guessing we always have the option to put fewer on there, assuming the school district in Pebble Beach, who I believe holds the deed restriction, as we learned um, in prior meetings, um, might not allow it anyway. So there, this is part of our buffer, I'm assuming, our extra buffer. That we could afford to lose it if we couldn't develop it, I guess is where I'm going with that.
I'm sorry, through Councilmember McCon, McDo, sorry, McDonald. Uh, site fifty-four is, uh, identified to, uh, potentially have up to one hundred and ninety-one above moderate units. So that would be a, a pretty, uh, large reduction from the, uh, from the unit count, uh, for above moderate units.
Thank you. That was my recollection as well. And part of the reason I'm asking is because we have the list that the planning commission recommended from their hip pocket, which included above, for example, the Safeway, um, Mission Linen, which we already know the owner's not interested in. So maybe not a good site to add, even though I, from a city perspective, it might be ideal. It's not if the owner's not, um, not open to that. Um, and then I'm sorry, I'm forgetting what the other one was, was the Country Club, um, shopping center. So I'm asking this question because while HCD is doing the review and they've talked about having things in our hip pocket. Can it be something that we're pursuing in the background, speaking to the owners, seeing if this is feasible? So if it comes back that they don't accept what we have submitted to them, it's not like we're starting from ground zero when that time comes and we're already looking into that so that we can say, okay, we haven't met that we have these two properties that we've looked at, we've vetted, we want to add those at this time. I guess the question, and maybe that's a question, I, I, I guess it's probably for staff and maybe for Rincon also, whether that can be done simultaneous to the HCD review or do we not want to spend? I, I guess my just concern is will this run into problems because it will require a vote of the people and overcoming deed restrictions that we do look at other opportunities and be working on them simultaneous, simultaneously in case it comes to that concern that we can't utilize this property. That's my concern. I don't want it. I don't want us to rush and then have this be the thing that holds us back because we didn't think about if, if this doesn't get approved, then do we have an alternate? So I don't know the answer to that.
I'm, I'd like to add that, uh, bringing an item back to council is never a simple um, one day trivial exercise and it's a lengthy document.
Hmm.
We ready for, uh, a vote?
Can you, can you, excuse me, Mayor, uh?
Yes.
Uh, can you restate the motion? So we, we're clear on what it is we're voting on. I'll give it a shot, but I would prefer Brian to restate it for me. But okay. Well, the mayor, I, okay.
Okay.
Motion to provide direction to staff to transmit the draft housing element to California Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, I'll just make it all one with the removal of site forty-nine. That is thirteen fifty-two lighthouse from the site inventory and any reference to Project Home Key. And remove community center site fifty-two references.
And provide.
And then I don't know if it's all one, but the, the mayor's motion was to provide direction to staff to take into consideration the planning commission comments that we've discussed at length and one of Councilmember Coletti's.
These, um, history suggestion.
History suggestion. I think that's, that's the best I can do right now.
And that was.
I will second that. Yeah. Okay.
All right. Uh, Ms. Goff, I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Okay. Councilmember Emilio.
Aye.
Member Beck.
No.
Councilmember Coletti. Councilmember McDonald.
I'll say no, just because I think we haven't fully discussed it, but I expect it will pass.
Councilmember Pudory.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
This is four to three. Thank you very much. Um, let's see. Just double checking. I don't think we have anything else left on our agenda. Come to the end. Thank you to.
Session.
Yeah.
Well, I'm closing the
Okay.
The regular meeting.
I thought you were ready to say.
That's a different meeting.
I thought you were ready to say adjourned, but.
No. So thank you to the public. Thank you to staff. Thank you to our consultants that have hung in here. Um, and, uh, appreciate, uh, your contributions and everybody have a good evening. Meeting adjourned. And now, um, our recessed special meeting will reconvene.
To close session, but I need to announce the item that remains for a closed session. We finished two.
Please.
The third one is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six, point nine, D two, one potential case complaint by employee of discrimination. You should ask for a public comment.
Okay, public comment. Uh, we already asked for public comment at the beginning, at the beginning of the meeting.
But not on this item.
Yes, on all, all the items.
But I did, okay.
On, on all the items at, at five o'clock.
But I didn't recite this item then.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
You missed. All right. Do we have any public comment on this item? I see a hand raised.
It's been raised for probably an hour.
All right. Well, uh, we'll close public comment and we'll adjourn to closed session. Yeah. He didn't.
Great.
It's all right. It was, we should have cut it sooner.